Or not, just make it a social hour.
I do have some follow up questions about the personnel list, but I can wait till.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's. Well, we're, 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 we're gonna do personnel now, but let's go through employee benefits.
Yeah.
Oh, benefits.
Go ahead Mitch.
Okay, so reserve for personnel, I've uh, gone through it more of a, more of a fine tooth call. We've also got some better figures than what we're gonna discuss in Monday's meeting about the GEA. We put in there, we got the teachers contract coming up. I came up with a total, and this includes one hundred thousand dollars for the pension, potential pension cola of three hundred twenty thousand dollars. Mary Jane has money in reserve to offset that, to bring it down to one hundred thirty thousand.
And that's what I did was I have reserve money set aside from other years, plus I'm anticipating, I anticipated a hundred and ninety thousand that we would save in the current year that we're not using. Remember, we had that discussion the, the other day, so.
Was that number a hundred and ninety?
Yeah, we, it, I have two hundred and ten in the budget right now, but I didn't.
Didn't wanna take it all.
Didn't zero it out, but, so I did a hundred and.
Are the teams still looking? Have they given you any feel, excuse me?
Teachers, I haven't heard yet. Haven't sat down yet.
So we don't know how they're dealing with the rest of the world or anything?
No, we don't know.
We've already reached out.
We've talked to them, and they're not ready to meet with us yet.
I don't mean meet, I don't mean any forum, I just general, okay. You know, I'm always concerned about their funds and how they're doing.
I'm not, I'm not as, I, I think that, you know, I, I think that the negotiations with the teachers will be pretty much just based on the salaries. I think their, um, their funding for their pension is, is, is sound now. I've heard any, I've heard any scuttlebutt about that being a problem. And you remember, we, we made that contract with them, that we're, we're paying significant amount there that, that absolves us of any future liabilities, so. It's worked for like, what?
I don't even know if this is what, but.
It's worked for two, it's worked for two contracts so far, so.
I know, you know, we did what we could, I mean, well, you get, you get time, the problem is times change, it's like.
So, so that's, you know, the, the reserve for personnel bucket, if you will.
Again, that includes a hundred thousand set aside for cola adjustments.
Correct.
And that includes every, right?
Yes.
All, all three, all three of the major.
Well, we had talked about it, a hundred thousand dollars, you about two point eight percent cost of living.
Right, okay, good.
For everyone.
A feedback on that issue?
I have not.
I've got a little feedback, I've talked to uh, the, a couple of the commissioners, Mike and, and Bob, and the, and the chief, and they are, the chief is supposedly putting that into, just into, into the public realm of the. There's some talk going on at, at PD about it, so.
I'm sorry, this is the pension?
Yes, the cola, cola, the cola.
The cola, oh, right.
Remember, we did it almost more for PR, not more for PR, but we wanted to make sure we got whatever PR we could out of it.
We had a couple of us met with the chairman, the man, Mike McLevy, chair, vice chair, and the chief and deputy chief with Mitch, there was Charlie, right? We talked about the whole issue of morale and the feeling that the current, uh, current staff who is still covered by pension, who can, who will retire with full pension, feel as if the, the, the town is not looking out for them. There's some concern that the folks might leave, some variety of issues, sweet tensions, morale, that kind of thing. So, um, we talked about this group was that two point eight percent across the board, but putting it into the budget so that that union has to come out and support the budget, because it might not, it, it, this would, we basically said this would be one of the first areas we go to if the budget goes down.
And then does it have to go back to, now, we, we, we have more power than the pension.
Oh, it's cold. Pension, pension, pension committee.
All I recognize.
Doesn't, there's no authority, this is, this is all us, which is exactly what we're trying to.
What was the original request, if I can just re.
Well, the typical way is done is you use the CPI, um, the way it's, it, which catch some good ones, catch some bad ones.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're at, what, the thirty year high of the CPI, so, and then the second set of numbers that we had was at sixty percent?
For some reason, I'm not sure the reason why, every time we get the, uh, the cola numbers from the actuary, they give us, maybe it was a request years ago that just kept following, was to give us a one hundred percent CPI, and then it's a mathematical equation, sixty percent of CPI, you know, kind of giving you a choice, and I'm honestly not sure why, uh, the sixty is chosen as opposed to fifty or seventy five, but that's what, those are the numbers that come to us, um, you know, the pension board looks at, pension committee looks at it first, makes recommendation, comes to you guys, and you guys take action or no action, as the case may be. But as Matt said, this, this year was extremely, extremely high, looking at every two years, and, you know, you've acted as you have, and now you've decided to potentially make an adjustment, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, the, the sixty percent is clearly arbitrary, and I, I think, I realized that when I was looking at the numbers, and this is what I said, that's what I said, you know, what could, what can we do?
Yeah.
It's just, it's just a calculation.
You're looking more at what the end number was than.
Yeah.
Yeah, calculating backwards, right.
What?
Yeah, what?
What the budget compare?
What do you, the budget compare right now?
Okay, let's do it. So that's how we got to it, that's how we got to that number, so.
And I would, I, I would just argue that the pension, our use, or pension committee probably appreciate that type of thinking, thinking. You, you know what I mean, cause we're.
Looking at the album.
It, it affects this year and every year forward, you know, it's not just a one year hit.
But it's also all employees, it would be, it's not just the police department.
Yeah, three unions.
Three, yeah.
Three, three, three plans.
Okay.
Well, there's one, one, one plan is the town plan, well, the town employees are split into two plans, one is police, and the other one is everyone else.
Okay.
And then there's the one for the non-certified Board of Education, which is everybody but teachers, not teachers.
Your point is it affects everybody that cola could affect.
Yeah, right, that's my point, as opposed to like the teams who are.
Right, it does not include teachers. Retirement, speaking of pensions, you know, retirement plans, you know, Mary Jane's put together a big list, that Mary Jane, you've put blue there, so you've made some changes, you wanna?
Oh, the, oh, um, the, the only difference is, um, we updated the mortality, mortality tables. So when Mitch and I originally put the budget together, we used the, the higher numbers, and then, or the, the normal numbers, I would say, and then the pension committee voted to put the mortality tables in place, which brought those numbers down. So purely a valuation change, no, no other adjustments there.
The next change is the heart and hypertension, that was just a, a slip between Mary Jane and I, it was supposed to be fifteen thousand, not fifteen hundred.
We tried.
And the other, the other change from the original presentation had to do with the OPEB trust, I was using the number from last year, I didn't realize it was a.
It's gonna go up every year, yes.
So that's gonna go from eighteen to thirty thousand. And the rest, we just kept the same for right now.
Mitch, do we have any active heart hypertension cases as opposed to potential cases? Are there any pending? Yes, we, yeah, we're not pending claims, we are paying out.
We are paying out.
Well, that's, yes, maybe pending, there are active claims.
There are some active claims, yeah.
I thought that, I had asked the question, and, uh, that we do have potential, potential eligible people.
Yes.
Still, I mean, that sunset.
Nineteen ninety eight.
It's sunset based on someone's employment.
We still have some employees that were employed during that period.
Correct.
And as they, we have some potential left.
Yeah.
It is sunsetted, so at least we have that ahead of us, but.
Now, just as a.
But there's new ones coming up anyway.
There's, there's more things brewing in legislature, I gotta tell you.
Just gotta say, um, there is a cancer, what is it, presumption?
Cancer presumption for firefighters.
Firefighters.
Wait till lead hits, it's coming.
Yeah, so.
All of the federal level now, but it's coming.
Yeah, well, they'd have to change Connecticut workers' comp rules.
That's what legislation would do.
They're proposing that?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
That's gonna make, that, that's gonna make the heart hypertension look like child's play. And lead exposure meeting like finally going into a house that's.
That's just fine with everybody. I, yeah, that's what we're hearing.
But, but the water's gonna shock the water.
Every house, every pipe.
On the inclination, just anyway, okay, I, I hear you, it sounds like you're closer to it.
At the federal level, he researched it, started it, it's last month, it's at first hearings.
As, as usual, Lou, there are a few bills up at the legislature this year that are not friendly to municipalities.
Why don't you give the, the one that's one sentence?
The one that's one sentence, I spoke to, I happened to, as a matter of coincidence, saw three legislators last night who told me it's going nowhere. That's good, there's a, there's a bill, Senate Bill nine thirty five, that would require all municipalities in the state that have police and fire to have them on either the state pension or a comparable pension, which would totally, totally flip every, every town, city that's gone to a four oh one, and it also says it's gotta, it's gotta be the state plan or better. So you may, you may have a pension plan.
It's gotta be the worst run plan that doesn't exist.
But you may have a, you may have a pension plan whose benefits are not quote unquote as good as the state, because the state plan, and one reason we've resisted the state plan is because it includes all overtime in the calculations. And so, um, so even the, even the towns and cities that have a pension plan, you know, they're old, that may not be quote unquote as rich as the MERS plan at the state, would also be affected, so, but the.
So that's a, that's a bill that's.
It's a bill, yeah.
I just, I just hope that isn't coming out of the controller's office. Try to beef up the enrollment in MERS, cause that's an interback to control.
That's a good point.
I mean, in a sense, there was something similar for private employers, I mean, they wanted everybody to check off that they had a a retirement plan for their employees, and it was at least, you know, available to people. We gotta go through it, but what we had was fish on, goodness.
Needless to say, CCA.
Your party controls it all.
You've had it for the Bush years.
I was thinking that, try not to say that loud. I'll be calling John later today.
Well, that's like, are we being recorded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Budget question?
Yeah.
You got it.
The OPEB number, OPEB number, the Board of Ed number is significantly higher than ours, they're budgeting one eighty.
What, why? It's, um, it's the subsidy, they, well, they, their liability is higher than ours, so therefore.
Why, why would that be, is it different groups that are included or?
Yes, it, it, well, they have more people in it, um, what's the, I can't think of the term, something subsidy, implied subsidy, there's an implied subsidy, um, in, in OPEB, because, um, so we have our medical fund, and we come up with this number, and then we determine how much per employee is going to pay, right? So we all pay the same thing, you belong to the Board of Ed, we belong to the town, we all pay the same thing. You have cancer, your expenses skyrocket, that's the implied subsidy that they're paying, so the employees put in, say it's a thousand dollars, so the Board of Ed puts in every dollar. If my costs are a thousand dollars a month, that's what I pay as a Board of Ed employee. But if my claims skyrocket, the plan covers it, I don't cover it. That is forcing a big separation between the Board of Ed and the town.
By them having more employees.
It, it spreads it out, correct, yeah, we have the risk too, ours is.
But they're.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's strictly number.
It's strictly employees and how it's valued, I'm, I'm giving you the real high, I'm not an actuary, but, um.
Are you, are you Googling implied subsidy?
I'm not sure I explained it a hundred percent properly, but that's how it gets explained to me, so there's that.
So they have six times the number of employees that we have, does that sound about right?
No.
It doesn't sound right to me.
It's not, it's not by employee, it's also by, um.
The plan they have.
Prior claims, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, and, and claims.
Experience.
Experience, not experience, it's, it's all woven into that number.
So the total number is calculated, and we're told how much to budget, and they are told how much.
The actuaries gave us a five year plan, and that's what we're going by.
So my, my question, I guess, is are, you're comfortable that the thirty plus one eighty two is the number that the town life we should be putting in? Is that the right number that we should be putting in and told for next year?
Based on the actuaries at Melon.
Understood.
That is.
Mechanically, that's the right numbers.
Those are the right numbers, yes.
Whatever those numbers are up to, okay.
That's the right number based on the plan we put in place, is how long it would take us to get there.
Yep, so five, we're on a five year plan.
I guess what I'm really asking is, we're positive that we're, there's symmetry between what we're doing, what they're doing, it's all gonna work out in.
It's all coming from, yeah, it's all coming from the actuaries, I would never be able to come up with that number, you know.
I'm not asking that, I'm asking mechanically, in order for you to determine that our share is thirty.
Our consultants have given us that plan, um, and ba- based on what, you know, the valuations, that's what they feel is the right numbers.
Thank you, okay.
So, so before we move on to capital, you had questions about the salary sheets that I distributed?
I did, I had a couple, and I apologize, because I'm sure you've gone over this a million times for us, um, the, the quick one, um, the school resource officer.
Right.
We're budgeting that we're gonna be receiving ninety thousand from the Board of Ed, the number I see in their budget is forty. Might be coming out of a grant, it might be somewhere else, but just wanna make sure we don't get caught short, and I'm seeing that on their side in other contracted services.
Was that with, when it was two, and each one was gonna make ninety?
We already have one, we already have one SRO officer in place, so there's a subsidy there.
That was torn.
The conversation that we had was subsidizing the second one, when I met with the superintendent and the police chief, the police chief.
I understand, so in our, but in our budget, we're saying we're expecting ninety, if I'm not mistaken, from the Board of Ed. Are they, in their budget, are they saying that they're giving us ninety, and I'm not seeing ninety, I'm seeing forty? So it probably is somewhere else, but my, that's my question, and I, I know you don't know.
My, my assumption, and I have no idea, they're currently giving us twenty for the first one, and I believe in their original budget estimates, they doubled that for a second person, maybe.
But that's not what we're expecting.
But. But I believe that negotiations were going on, you know, since then, but we can, we can follow up on that.
That's a good question, though.
Yeah, it's a good question.
We're expecting ninety, they only got forty, we're gonna be fifty, fifty short.
Right, cause that was a conversation we had with Butch just last week or something, so.
Yeah, all right, um, that's nice. Poll, poll workers, it's not a big number from you.
Loose lines, this is iPad can do that, I knew they could do.
No idea. Which one is it?
Musical interlude.
I was gonna say, at least it was, you know, soothing.
On the poll worker number, which is forty eight thousand, how does that break down?
I don't know.
Okay, it just seems like a lot, and going back to the same, exactly four years ago, our actual was, I, I don't have that open, but I think it was around ten thousand. So I'm just kinda trying to do the math, I mean, what is a poll worker, how many polling places are there, I can't come in.
Well, you got five, you got five polling places, and you've got, and you've got, you know, moderators and, and, and everybody for, you've got refer, they're, they're scheduling for referendum, they're scheduling for primary, scheduling for general. Huh?
Two events.
Right, and then a general election.
Okay, great.
So you got three events being scheduled for, um, the minimum wages, the lives people are minimum wage, so that has increased quite a bit in the last four years.
Three events times five polling, cause this is what I was trying to do.
Yep, okay.
Three events times five polling places, how many, just how many people who are not volunteers are there, do you guys think are there at polling places, not counting.
I understand that.
Go for it, I don't know.
Changes in the election thing, like people that could register, saying things like that, my understanding, in the past couple of years, they have added number of employees.
Yeah, so they haven't, yes and no, they haven't added employees as much as they've brought people in, in those, those heavy.
That's what I meant by add.
So there's parts, there's part time, um, assistant registrars who are downstairs, helping with the absentees, helping with the, um, setting up the polls, there's a lot of work that goes in, not just those three days. Those three days, you have to ask the registrar, I'm not familiar with the, how, how many poll workers we have.
So as a budget question, can you ask, can you find out, or I can, I can ask, just back of the envelope, you know, because it works out to, um, at, at, let's say, three hundred dollars a day for a fourteen hour day, just really rough math, it's, that's a hundred and sixty per mandates or per state takes. So for three, three different election events, it just seems like a lot to me. Yeah, one thing I'm wondering is, are we, there might be an assumption that, what if there's a second budget referendum, which is an, kind of goes as an, kind of goes as an example of what I've been saying about contingency being embedded so many places in the budget, where you identify them.
I don't think they have a se- second referendum, but they do have the anticipation of early voting.
I'd be interested in just seeing that.
That, that, that's an interesting question. My understanding is that the changes in the election laws have affected the number of people, whether it has to that effect, that'd be an interesting factor.
I'm gonna write to the registrars right now.
I think Gloria presented that day, she mentioned the early voting, but didn't she say the state might subsidize it in the first year?
Yeah, and we're not sure it's gonna happen this November.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's optimistic.
And, and didn't, didn't she say the state was gonna tell us how many days of early voting?
She did, somehow it got translated into a number, so that's just my question, what is that number?
Could is that number really potentially continue to?
So you said about a hundred and fifty man hours, uh, to that forty five thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and sixty times three hundred bucks a day, which I think is probably higher.
Fourteen hour, are they fourteen hour days, yeah, right?
Yeah.
So that's fifty, let's go there fifty four hours.
But you're actually looking.
Fifty four man hours per event, right? So divided by three, three, that's fifty four.
You're actually, you're actually looking at, at at least fifteen hours a day, the polls are open fourteen hours a day, but the workers have to be there about an hour before, an hour after, so you're fifteen to sixteen hours a day, plus there's, plus there's training. They sit through training, which they're paid for, I don't know the extent of how long that is for each poll worker. It's a couple more hours, um, like I said, the minimum wage, since the minimum wage has gone up, it's also pushed up the other, the, the people at the bottom, I don't mean this derogatorily, people at the bottom who may be just your checkers are now getting fifteen, that means your assistant registrars and your moderators are getting, you know, somewhat more, so.
We'll see all these numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the, the fiscal.
Do you know what, they came up with that number, they've gotta have some backup, so Mary Jane's gonna request the backup.
I'm pink noting Lisa, that she was online, so also.
I'm sure there's a, I'm sure there's Matt behind it, just be interesting, because it's so much higher.
Yep.
Then the other things, I'm sorry, I know you've explained these before, so please forgive me.
Don't worry about what's up.
Going, going over to communications, to the overtime line, which is a hundred and twelve thousand, I think that this, three individuals, four individuals in that department are in fifty to sixty thousand dollar range.
Yep.
Why is the overtime so high relative to the regular employees, and why don't we just have an additional person?
Well, to answer your last question first, we have looked into that, and, and the.
That's how I get you a question.
The, the answer from, from Mike Chove, and I've had a discussion, um, is that we're not there yet. It would still, it would cost us more to hire a fifth dispatcher. The issue is that four dispatchers theoretically carry you for twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, but they have vacation, they have sick leave, they have personal time. So when they're out, their shift has to be covered, and that's where that comes in, and they've determined the coverage, you know, for next year's. And when they're, and when, and when you're covering a shift, if you've already worked forty hours that week, the eight hour shift you're covering is now a time and a half.
Sure, understood, and I know we've talked about it before, but again, it's, it's not really common sense wise. Why is it that we're not, why is it that we're not ready?
Where I'm coming from, in past discussions, I've struggled with exactly what you're saying, I mean, if you got a hundred thousand, you would think you just get another boy, but that's not the issue, the issue is, to Mitch's point, is a timing thing. If, if there was such a thing as a additional floating employee, only work those issues, and if that type of person existed, that would fit into that model of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to get another full time boy, but that isn't what it is, at any given point, you may need somebody for one week and not need anybody for two or three weeks.
Right, so, so if we hired an additional person and paid them the same that we're paying the others, to have that person on call, it would still cost us half or whatever.
That's, 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 that's Charles' point, being a floater on call, that person would then have to be available at any time, and you got, there's somebody sitting out there waiting to be called.
So it might almost be cost effective to, to pay that person not to work, to be on call. I mean, that, that's something that I don't know if we've looked at, you know, pay a person, maybe one of the existing people, you know, have different people on call at any time, and pay them to be on call, I mean, we're other.
I understand that the, the chief and Mike have looked at that extensively.
On call situations.
Well, and what it would take to, to, yeah, what it would take to do that, and I don't know that it, they, they've come out with it's not cost effective, but I'd rather they explain it to you from their standpoint, if you wanna have a further discussion with them.
I, I struggle with exactly, when you're looking at the numbers, you say, geez, for a full time person, and then you save a third, but, perhaps, whatever.
So how can we get that answer?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly have them come to us, these are great discussions. Yeah, I'm not sure if they're gonna affect this budget, you, you know what I mean, because we're, maybe, you know, but certainly, these are discussions we need to have, you know, throughout the time so that we can.
That's an interesting question, right, so a lot of the conversation, there's great conversation we've had during the past couple of weeks, and then during the capital budget presentations, it's fantastic, and we learn so much, but we shouldn't be doing it at these times. So what, digressing, I'm gonna re-propose something I've mentioned in the past, we have that meeting, that annual report meeting that we do every year that we go to.
Yeah.
That one.
You just did.
That no one else is, that's like in May.
Well, someone needs to make a motion.
Exactly, exactly, wouldn't it be great if we did that in such a way, and I, maybe it's not possible to do it for this year, but if we did it in such a way that that's when the, the department heads came and talked about what they're doing. Fifteen minutes a pop, and, and I think that would be really informative for the community.
Where we've been and where we're going.
Yeah, and, and I think it, frankly, I think it would make our discussions during this process.
It could floralize some meat to that meeting.
Yeah, and, and it would make our budget process, and, and we wouldn't be told, that's a great, that's a great point, but it's too late, we should do anything about it, you know.
It, it also ties into my goal for our, um, budget book, because it, it incorporates, um, achievements that you've made and goals for the future, all within, as part of your budget presentation, so that we could all, I mean, that's like the, the next step that I'm looking to, you know, in- incorporate into that, kind of feeds, feeds into that.
And like this question about the on call, that would have to be fed to the department head early, so they could answer that.
Right, right.
You wouldn't hit him at that presentation.
No, that's not fair, no.
The other thing, I mean, like, you know, not hit him with, but come up in that discussion.
No, I mean, I think it's a good thing, but if we, some of these things we bring up, we need to share with them before we expect them to come back with it.
It's not a gotcha game, no.
No, not at all, and that's not what my question now is meant to be either, but if it has been discussed, and if there is a reason for it, it should be very easy for those individuals to provide, you guys with that reasons, to report back to us, so.
Isn't there built in overtime too, because they can't take lunches?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no, they don't get, they get paid lunch.
Also, the numbers, the, the numbers don't, the numbers don't work out. It's, there's a hundred and sixty eight hours a week to cover seven by twenty four, we've got four employees, that's forty two hours each. So at the outset, we're already paying overtime, right?
Oh, for sure, yes.
So that's part of it, now, if you do it, if you do it with five people.
Right.
Comes out at thirty three or thirty four hours a week.
Right.
That's where you're picking almost a full, full shift, right? So the point is, can they, can they do some scheduling, where they schedule thirty two hours a week for everybody, uh, but they're on call, if somebody's always on call, who has to come in.
Yeah, you're working thirty two, but you're on call for eight.
Right, it's a little more, it's obviously more difficult scheduling, but that's what management's supposed to be able to figure out.
I'll, I'll talk to Mike Cho, and we'll see what he can back from.
Thank you, thanks, and then my fourth one, and I'm, I know we've talked about this, is the fact that there's four dispatchers in communications and three in police, and does that have to do with?
Because the four, the four dispatchers in communication are twenty four seven, they're downstairs at all times. The dispatchers and police are, are basically Tuesday through Saturday, um, that's, that's their work time, eight hours a day, um, each of them. So there's, they, they cover the twenty four hours, but the, the, the off shifts there are covered by, by officers.
Okay, and those are, is it a case where it's the same job title, but they're serving a different function?
It's a case where a, a sergeant or lieutenant may be sitting at the.
No, I think she means the dispatchers, are they the same, are they the same?
No.
Sometimes they're, sometimes they're not.
There, there's seven, there's seven people in the same union, but there's a difference between the communications dispatcher, nine one one dispatcher, and a dispatcher at the police department, who's dispatching the police, the police vehicles.
Okay, so it's a really, it's the same ti- job title, but it's a different thing?
Correct.
It's not a duplication, okay, thank you, thank you, it's all ahead.
Good, good questions.
I just wanna add, Lisa Cops is in the office, and she's gonna hopefully bring that analysis up of the registrars.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on employee benefits?
I think we're pretty, I think our salaries.
Our salaries.
You know, and, so just a, one, quick question, it's a hundred thousand that we're talking about for pension, for COLA, all right? Is that, is that something we have to go back to, uh, Milman, to say, is that gonna affect our contribution for pension?
It will in the future years.
Yeah.
Not this, not this current budget.
Right, I, I don't, I don't think it would, because we're gonna put the hundred thousand in for the next budget, right, the following, it, it'll affect the following budget, right?
So we're actually, we're gonna be, we have the money to pay out.
Correct.
Got it.
That's how we feel some days.
So we're discussing this publicly, so it's, is it public knowledge to the police and the other?
It was, because we had conversations with the chief, and they were gonna socialize it under your building.
Okay.
That was part of our.
And our retired police?
I, believe me, if there's something that's happening in the police department, the retirees know about it.
Okay.
Daily emails, that's all I'm gonna say.
Saying the grapevine works, is that what you're saying? Saying the grapevine, where the informal network, uh, work quite well.
Susan, have one more.
Just one more on employee benefits, and on the medical line, um, again, now I'm looking at the board of that budget, I'm just trying to see if the two fit together, and I realize you didn't prepare it and don't have it in front of you. But, so they're breaking down the total, um, the anthem bill between ourselves and them, and they've, they've got, um, three quarters of it, and we've got one quarter roughly, which again is not consistent with the OPEB numbers, but. Um, so the number that they're attributing to us is about four million, and we have about four point four, can you just walk us through the?
Well, there's, there's, uh, there's a lot of different variables.
Yes.
That, that are in there, and I.
Yeah.
Won't say that I know all of them on the board of that side, but I can tell you how we and I come with our, our numbers. So, um, and I can share this for, so we start with what we've determined is the town's portion of the contribution, we meet as a group, we come up with a big number, we get our percentage, I start with that, that number for us.
And that's the same one that they're showing, four million, oh, twenty-eight thousand, is that right?
Yes, exactly, four million, oh, twenty-eight thousand, eight twenty-two.
So before you go any further, is it, the diff- the reason there's a different percentage between the OPEB and this, because this is dealing with our active employees.
Uh-huh.
Right, and the OPEB is dealing with retirees, and so the percentages are gonna be different based on the number of retirees from each group, number one, number two, how rich the benefits are. Because remember, the benefits, the benefits for the, for, across the, the anthem benefits for, for, for the, um, current employees are pretty well balanced. You know, going out, we know that the police retirees have a, a different plan than other retirees, many retirees for the towns have no plan, that, uh, requirements there, so. Um, that's, that's, that's a, you know, a reason why your percentages would not, would never line up, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
It'd be a coincidence if they did.
Yeah.
It's not fitting in.
All right, thank you, that makes sense.
And, and as, as we may recall, a couple of years ago, when they did the rebalancing, we, the town wound up picking up a substantially higher increase in our medical costs. Some years you win, some years you lose.
This is the blackboard, this is, because I put it over here, and I won't try to force myself to get this stuff. All right, so I'm gonna move on from you today. Yeah, okay, so, so we start with that number, and from there, so then we reduce that number by what we get from employees, so we have, um, from retirees, COBRA. Um, and the town employees' contribution, that brings me down to about three point two eight.
Okay.
All right, now we have to add back in other things, so we add back all the money that the town contributes to employees' HSAs.
Yep.
I have a hundred and ninety-three thousand for that.
Okay.
Um, then we add in the Teamsters Medical, which is also part of this budget, all right, um, almost five hundred thousand dollars, um, and then we reimburse some employees who take a, a waiver.
Yep.
And that's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, all those together bring us to the four point three seven six.
Okay, thank you.
The waiver costs it down three point nine eight thousand.
Nine six seven.
Here.
Pays roughly a third of what the cost would be with us, and they took the insurance?
Well, by the way, first of all, this number's come down significantly in the last couple of years, so the three ninety-six is way down from the almost half a million dollars it was a couple of years ago. The, the people, um, depending on when they were hired, they could be receiving up to fifty percent of what the town's cost was for their insurance. Charles, you know that all the new employees are getting two hundred dollars a month, so we've got people receiving anywhere from, you know, basically two hundred dollars a month to up to about fourteen, twelve to fourteen hundred dollars a month. Depending on when they were in their contract, as more, as more of those older people, and I don't mean old in age, but mature people in the, in the contract retire, we've. That's, that's been coming, that's been coming down, um, significantly, so all new employees are, that, that do waive, are getting two hundred dollars a month, with the exception of the police, which is twenty-five percent of the, uh, single person rate, which is about two fifty a month right now.
Wow.
It used to be based on how many people were in the plan, so if there was a person working here and had a wife and two children in the plan, that's why the waiver was so high.
Right.
A few years ago, that was way too rich, and so now it's, it's whether you, whether you are just yourself, or whether you have ten children, you're gonna get the two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I know, that was part of the negotiation, I remember that conversation, but still, four hundred thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm gonna date myself, this is going back, uh, to the phone company, there were corporate strategies to control medical costs, and that's where the opt-out came in, this is probably about thirty years old, and it was a classic bait and switch. The first year, the first couple of years, it was rich, all right, they eventually started doing what we have done over time, which is draw it down, because, you know, now, now it's a common theme that people know they can collect if they turn, if they, uh, decline benefits, but. But here's, here's the interesting part, what has happened over the years in terms of medical costs, you've got inverse curve going, all right, medical costs have been going like this, and reimbursements for opt-outs have been going like this, so who wins? Who wins, because of that margin between cost and, uh, what you're paying out, significantly greater than what it was at the, at the initial time.
I, I just think we're in the right direction, absolutely, it's still four hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah. But there's, and like I say, though, there, there's also a significant number of people that do opt out, there's, there's many more, uh, you know, working families with, with two people working, and, you know, they figure whose benefits cost more. We have a very rich plan, in many ways, it's a very big plan, it's also expensive, so, you know, if you've got two, two, two spouses, one takes, the other one says, I'll take two hundred, I'll take, you know, two hundred dollars a month, don't pay for the other.
More, more people are insured than they used to be.
Yep.
Right.
And all of those things are playing in, my only point is, it's four hundred thousand dollars.
And, and it's a good point.
And one, one, one last point is, you're not, you're not allowed to opt out unless you show me.
Proof.
Proof that you have insurance with, with someone else, either your, either your parent.
You get it private.
Yeah, remember, we've, we've, some of our hirees are in their young, early twenties, and there's, and because, because of the Affordable Care Act, that can be, that forces, you know, you can be covered age twenty-six. Some of those people are still on their, their parents' plan, and they, they come, they go actually on our plan when they turn age twenty-six.
True.
Yeah, that's interesting.
But if all of the, if the people that were on the waivers, suddenly everybody said, forget it, I wanna go on the health plan, it would be more than four hundred thousand dollars, wouldn't it?
Oh, our costs are tremendous more, yeah.
Yeah.
From the health player, yeah.
Is, is there ever a way to revisit that idea of kids, uh, children up to twenty-six having the waiver, because, could we carve that out at some point in the future?
Um, I don't think, I don't think so, because it'd be discriminatory against a, a young person, you know, some, sometimes the parents wanna kick them off the plan, you know, they, they say, look, you got a full-time job, take the insurance.
And there's, there's a universe of somebody not being potentially covered under their parents' plan.
Of course, but if the waiver is because they're under their parents'.
It's not a significant number of people, but it is, it is a newer dynamic that we, we've seen in the last several years, um, be, because of that, um, so a lot of our, our newer employees, or our newer, younger employees, you know, are waiving. And then I get the call, hey, I gotta go on our plan, you know, I'm, I'm coming off my folks' plan, so. And we're, wait, what am I?
Another subject for.
Sorry, okay.
What is a good question?
So we, before we move on from salaries, I have Karen printing out the analysis from the registrars that I just received from an email, so she's making everybody a copy, so, um, and, uh. I have other answers from other things just to bring to, thanks Karen.
Of course.
I haven't even looked at it, I just had Karen print it, so, wanna pass it around?
I didn't want to take everybody's time off.
No, no, this is important.
It's important that you understand the budget, because people will be asking questions, you know?
Yeah.
If you have a question, somebody else may have a question.
Right, and, you know, you said from four years ago, it went from ten thousand to forty-eight, that's a significant jump, and there may, there may be all legitimate reasons for it, but, yeah.
Good to know.
This is simple, whichever is not why.
Well, it does list, you know, what expenses, how many hours you ask for, you ask for number of hours.
So there's four elections in here.
Yes.
There's the possible municipal primaries in here.
You wanna answer that question?
Well, it, it, it's a contingency, it's an example of contingency being embedded all over the budget. I think it would be wise to capture those things and look at it, I know we can't do that.
But, let's, let's.
We need to have a pre-budget meeting before, yes, yes.
The risk, yeah, the risk, the risk of, of consolidating all the contingency in the one mass contingency line, and not having it sort of broken out, is, all of a sudden, then you have this fat pigeon, looks like it's available. And the cuts happen based on the size of that, without understanding the granular reason why each of the sections are there, that's the counterpoint.
Sure, and we would support it and explain it, and.
Yeah.
You know, but it wouldn't be at a hundred percent of the individual items, it would be a lesser percentage of the, because they're not all gonna have it at once.
What I would love to have seen, uh, don't see here is, in the very, very first, uh, Congress, the number of poll workers, I would love to see how that has changed over the past, it's truly two years, pre, pre-pandemic. Because I think the pandemic changed a lot of the voting parameters, but it would be interesting to see how many, uh, poll workers were needed. Then, how many there were, that's where I think a lot of the calculations from.
I just asked her if she had a similar.
Pre-pandemic.
I, I said fiscal twenty, yeah, I asked her for fiscal twenty.
How many, how many poll workers were required in twenty twenty?
I imagine it's the same number, I mean, per, per, per election, I don't, I don't think you'd have any more or less.
Okay, well, that's.
As long as you have the same number of polling, polling places.
If that's the case, then, uh, what was the number compared to the thirty-seven, seven eighty-nine?
Well, that, we can, that's, we can look right here.
You're, you're, you're saying was thirty-seven?
What was thirty-seven, seven eighty-nine?
Right.
Um, the act, well, I can tell you, I can pull it up on my, on UNIS two, the actual was, this is only showing ten thousand, let me pull it up on UNIS.
Yeah, the other thing you have to realize is that in the last four years, your, your minimum wage has gone up about forty percent, and that, that's a big part of this. That's, that's a big part of this, you know, paying somebody eleven dollars per hour versus fifteen dollars an hour.
I understand, man.
And, and I don't know if twenty twenty is, is a good comparison, only because, as far as actuals, because we did. We did elections, we didn't have a referendum.
Talking number of poll, but nothing to do with number of.
You asked, you asked the total.
Nothing to do with number of.
You asked the total, you asked the, how it compared to the forty-five, that would be the dollar amount. That's not what you're asking? You, you asked, you, you asked, is it compared to the forty-five?
The thirty-seven is a calculation of how many primaries, if you're right.
Right.
And remember, this, this particular fiscal year, they're looking at a potential municipal primary, a potential presidential primary in the same year, because the municipal primary would be in the summer, this coming summer, and then the presidential primary would be next spring.
That calculation is easy, divide by whoever's.
Presidential year, that's right, now, is this the first time that, uh, the, uh, presidential primary would be, uh, before July first, or?
Yeah, I think it's usually before July, I think it's always connected before July first.
Okay, so then, whatever comparison to the last presidential election cycle.
To eliminate that variable, you just calculate what, a clause per vote, then it doesn't matter.
Is that after July first, though?
That's, yeah, but that would be, that would be July, July of twenty-four.
That, that's a contingency variable, that's what I'm saying.
Figure out what it costs per vote, then it's our fault. Yeah?
Already, already, Susan, already.
She's got a series of issues that she needs to consider herself.
Um, yeah. So I mean, if you just look at most of those, those daily, those daily pays are based on a fifteen-hour day, um. And your, your greeters and your tabular tenders are all fifteen dollars an hour, and you get a little bit more for the others above them.
We can set it aside and see if we get the comfortable one, probably, before we go on to something else.
Yep, all right, are we in capitals?
Sure, we certainly can be.
Are there, are there any other questions or things that we had sent you back to?
I did, I did have a couple of answers for some of the things, if you want me to go into them.
I think that would be good.
Okay, um, so the first one I had was, um, question for the building inspector, um, the difference between regular inspections, so I do have something from her. Um, so, for twenty-one, twenty-two, and, and I'll make sure everybody gets this, or do you want me to have it, you want me to have Karen print it, it's a spreadsheet, going back from sixteen, seventeen to twenty-one, twenty-two.
What's your pleasure?
Well, it's here, it's here.
Okay, so, um, so, uh, inspections for twenty-one, twenty-two, total four hundred and eighty-four. Um, the prior year, four hundred and twenty-three, and before that, only two hundred and five, so they've doubled, more than doubled since twenty twenty, um, which would be the change in the code of inspections.
That was my question, is it number of?
Correct.
It's versus code, okay.
Correct, and, um, and, and definitely number of inspections makes a big deal, because when I look under permits, it only went from twenty-six to thirty-five, or new, so. Correct, so it's inspections, just like you said, driving that number compared to new things, you know what I mean? So one new, one new thing dumped, you know, but a, a double in, in inspections.
Buildings. They pay for an additional, okay, so it's, it's not more, it's more inspection, I'm trying to see if the.
I believe that's why, that was, was that part of the discussion when you brought up the, the rates, any of the fees?
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean, so by raising the fees, means maybe incorporated additional inspections, I don't know, I, I, I wasn't part of that.
The revenue is up, for sure, but it's not swamped by.
So if somebody that's remodeling something, a building, a building.
Yeah.
Do they pay per inspection?
No, for one building.
So the permit includes inspections.
Right, oh, yeah.
Right, but again, you know, the increasing fees would hopefully compensate.
Okay, I should, say they fail an inspection, and they gotta go back five times.
Doesn't change.
Doesn't change.
I mean, it slows up, the incentive, the incentive obviously is on the homeowner or the builder to get something done so they can get to the end zone, but I mean, it takes multiple.
But the out-of-pocket is up.
Yeah.
Another thing to add to the do outside the, outside the.
I mean, I think that's very real, I mean, somebody's.
It almost sounds like you need to have an in-depth discussion with every department head about things, I don't know.
Right.
You, you know?
So that, that, that. So that, that, that essentially what you're saying is shift the, the risk of a failure onto the builder.
Not the risk, the cost. I mean, if, if their failure to do something.
Right.
Okay, you know, results in us having additional expense and ti- time is spent. I mean, town employee costs fifty, sixty dollars an hour.
I think, I think one of the, one of the questions to see whether how far we go with this is, is to ask, how many, how many, how often does that happen? That's ten, ten percent occurrence or thirty five percent occurrence?
Well, I, I think it would open a, a builder's eyes to, you know, how many times did I want to screw up?
I'm detailing all of this to you guys, so you, you'll have it in your mail when you're here now and when you get home. Um, are we done with that one for the moment?
Yep.
Okay, then you asked about um, commercial versus residential from the assessor's office. Let me read to you what she wrote back. Commercial properties account for six point eight percent of the total real estate and residential is ninety one percent. That was one question. The field work in, okay, so I'm going to stop there because that's, that's simply the answer.
That's been, that's been in that neighborhood for a long, long time.
Yep, so that was first question from hers. And the second question was about the field work number, that twenty thousand. The field work entails two different items. First, we would be measuring, verifying and listing new construction, new building permits, which adds money to the grand list by adding value to both residential and commercial construction. So, because as, as the building is being completed, we can assess a certain amount. Um, an example would be.
Inspections don't add to it, the builder.
The word.
It makes us permit.
No, but as.
Verifying the information doesn't add to it.
As the inspections are complete, it's forwarding to the assessor's office and then we.
Fine, but the, the value is added when the permit is made, not in the inspection.
We're not talking, we're not talking, we're talking assessor now. We're not talking the building department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the twenty thousand dollar in field work.
But you just said verifying information increases.
Correct, as, as the building department completes a, 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 a portion of a inspection for a new complex, the assessor's office can assess based on the completion of that project. So, so the assessor's office is going to use some of this money to verify all of that permitting to make sure that our assessments are correct.
That's great, except I don't think when you jump to the statement that the verification adds to the grand list because the grand list has already been added to.
But we add to the grand list every single day.
Okay, I understand that, but it's got nothing to do with the verification. Grand list added to the verification, confirming the addition. So it's not the verification is not. No, I understand, yes. By, by building permits becoming assessed, we're adding to the grand list. It's got nothing to do with verification of it.
Okay, maybe verification's the, the wrong word, but the assessor's office has to review what's been done and make sure that they're properly assessing where it is.
Yes, they have to review, but the review isn't what's adding the numbers. The numbers are the building permit.
Um, oh. Not explaining that well.
Building permit doesn't drive an assessment.
I understand that, okay, but it does sort of. And that to me should be a digital thing. I mean, that should be automatic. Building permit results in X numbers of new assessment, okay? Now, you can't say that from the building assessment, you have a internal verification of that assessment. Okay, that's good. That's a nice thing, okay, but that's got nothing to do with the number. Number is on the building.
But the building permit does not include whether you put a subzero refrigerator in or you put a frigidaire uh dorm room refrigerator in or you put marble versus a Corian or versus, so that, that is.
I don't think the brand of range affects the assessment.
Personal property, it does.
No, not, not.
Yeah.
Not, not.
Range doesn't. Personal property is numbers of bedrooms and square footage.
So here's, here's, let's have Becky available for Monday to explain exactly what this, why they need this and what the benefit is because we're not going to be able to effectively cover it uh right here.
I think, I think there's.
I don't want to get sidetracked on it.
Well, I think there's a subjective assessment by the assessor.
Exactly.
After work is done to say, how has this changed the value? There's, there could be an enormous difference between the project, Matt, for instance.
And there is, and there is, and maybe these are, maybe these are commercial, maybe they're residential, but.
Yeah.
I'm going to give you an example. We do, every year we go out, we hire somebody to do about ten or fifteen um evaluations on personal property. I'll give you one in particular, uh Palumbo's Automotive, all right? We wound up going out there and the difference, because of all the tools that are in that shop aren't, aren't, have, weren't reported, all right? Well, it turns out with Palumbo's, those, the individual mechanics actually own those, but um, remember.
Yeah, I'll give you that example, but that's.
So, may, may, why don't you just let me read this whole thing? Let, let me just read her email before we stop at every side of it. Okay, all right, all right. So moving on from there. She says, an example would be when construction is complete on the new condos at sixty six High Street, that must be physically verified and valued, that the value would be added to the grand list. So they're told it's complete and then they go in and, and look at it. Guilford had someone come in in twenty one, twenty two for this purpose, the second, for that purpose. So that's, we are, we already had somebody come in and do that. The second portion would be personal property discovery and listing for businesses. There were approximately eighty new businesses discovered last year, which we are required to value. These added over two hundred thousand dollars in value to the grand list this year in January. It can also add value by having an appraiser review and go to businesses which haven't filed and listing their personal property as there may be property which isn't being declared like.
Okay, in that example, I'll give you, you know, then you can add to the grand list. Okay, I'll give you that.
So these are ways in which value can be added to the grand list in non-revaluation years and thus are very important. Empirical evidence has suggested these areas need more attention. The fees depend on who we hire and how they charge. They can charge by property or by hour. Also, meas- measuring time can vary depending on what is being listed, such as a new commercial property value versus a residential addition. Okay.
I mean, what they're doing is going after people that got the empty car and it rocks.
So I'm going to forward this to you guys as well, so you're going to get lots of emails.
That, that twenty thousand is a contract, would be a contracted service anyway if we.
Correct, it's all contracted services.
And we might not spend twenty thousand, right?
Yep.
So.
It's getting very close to that area of the license plate scanners with the out of state plates, so.
If we decided to try this, we could always down the road ask for results. We can say, what did you, you know, what did you?
Is this being cost effective?
You could try it, yeah.
Have we, have we recovered more in grand list, taxable?
That's a slippery slope.
Recovery versus spending twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars doesn't strike me as such a high hurdle that we wouldn't be able to come back. I would imagine they'd be able to find that much value, but a report is certainly feels appropriate at some point.
Yeah, that's, that's different than building. I have no problem with that.
Very thorough answer.
Thank you. Is that a pink note that you sent somebody and they got back to you?
No, it's his email I sent. I sent emails to all the questions, all the people you asked questions of, so I'm just.
Spitting them back.
Spitting them back at you, I. Um. So the, the, the only one that I don't have an answer for is parking rec program fees and potential uses, um. Uh, Ellen, Ellen Cloud is, is, is on vacation. She's, she's out of the office for whatever reason. Um, she manages that whole program, so.
What was the question again?
They wanted to know, uh, how, what's the balance in the parking rec program fees?
Yeah.
And, and which I could probably tell you, um, but the potential uses, you know, Rick, Rick is working on that.
So Charles, here's a couple of items that I'm looking at the building permit fees, goes directly to your point of who pays for sort of goof ups on the construction site. A penalty fee of two hundred and fifty dollars will be assessed for any work done prior to obtaining permit, which always got up my skin.
Question right here.
Oh, good. The second one is penalty fee will be assessed, twenty five dollars will be assessed for any scheduled inspection if the work is not complete upon arrival of the building official. So there's a couple of ways. Now that's complete as opposed to I found the violation and you got to fix it. That's a little bit different, but at least there's some, some effort in place to try and.
I didn't mean it at crib, I just.
No, 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 wasn't taken that way. Not, not taken that way at least. Okay.
So what?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the person's property thing.
Two more combined.
Yeah.
We just not, we just asked the same question.
And it doesn't count the people who didn't report at all. This is an audit of the forms that were submitted.
Correct.
Eight of them were substantial. What's the percentage of the? Can't do it in the best, but wow. Wow, it's very telling.
Right here. This is what you talked about. Here it is.
It's a bit of a slippery slope, yeah, I mean. But I think we ought to get everybody up to the beat, so everybody pays their fair share.
Let's keep.
You still want a fair share to jump to prospecting?
Yeah.
I agree.
So the response about the breakdown between commercial and residential, it's not really the question that we have at all, thank.
Okay.
Our specific question had to do with increases. So if, if the, oh, if the increase on app, the overall increase was thirty two or thirty three percent. And we all feel, just based on the conversations we've had, I mean, the people whose increase is less than that are not speaking up, but everybody we've talked to, and I think everybody in this room had substantially higher increase than that. So if everybody's gotten a higher increase than the average, it doesn't make any sense. Someone's got to be below the average. And I just have, I, I would like to know if that's because commercial, the average, so it's the average increase for residential or the total increase for residential and the total increase for commercial.
Did I give you guys copies of this?
Yes.
I think it's in that fact.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I think, I'm pretty sure we can derive.
No.
Uh, no, it doesn't break it, it doesn't break it out by commercial.
Right, because I know I get those afterwards. When we get the final one, we get all that breakdown, but, so I'm asking Becky the question. She might get back to us while we're here, so. What is the total increase in the new, I started writing and then we started talking, so the total increase in the new grand list for commercial versus residential?
Yes, yes.
And that would be, that, that, I think real estate is probably what you want. Commercial versus residential real estate.
Yes.
So because personal property tax is all going to be.
Right, so take that, yeah, you're right.
All right, so I'm going to send that question.
What about motor vehicle?
Uh, I don't care.
Send. Send, we'll see if she gets back to us.
To see in motor vehicle is, is the lease, which is not an interest.
Oh, how many are leased? Leased payments to what company, yeah? And, and, but does that affect the outcome? The tax is the same.
No, it's just, it had nothing to do with taxes, I just.
Just curious, how many people are leasing?
In what company? I was shocked at what company it was last time.
Well, I sent that to Becky. We'll see if she gets back to us.
Actually, we got the.
It's in there?
Yeah, because personal property tax, you have, you have personal property tax for business, right?
Well, isn't the state doing vehicles now?
I think it's in.
Or boats.
How they doing boats? They impose the cap on the total.
No, but I mean, the boat tax.
Boat, yeah.
Yeah, it's been like that for a while.
We usually, dealerships, the Ford tax went hard for two, never got it back.
Once it's there, it's hard to get it back.
Do we have any car dealers anymore?
No.
Yeah, I don't think we actually.
Not new cars, we've got, we've got used cars, used car dealers.
Where?
Oh, Palumbo's, I think, Palumbo's one.
Texaco, two thousand, and George, you know.
Yeah, I mean, they have some, I mean.
George and Fox.
Sort of like a lot.
They're not, they're not floor planning.
Not their primary business.
And the, the one outside of Sunrise, right inside is going up to Sunrise.
That's true.
Well, at one point, there was probably three or four dealerships in town, including one right on the green. When I first.
Oh, yeah.
Was that, was that the town garage? No, oh, no, it's Evergreen, right next to Paige, Evergreen, you know that driveway? That little driveway between.
Yeah.
It was a.
The Ford.
Amazing. Okay. Big as you were.
It had nothing to do with the budget.
Girlfriend history?
It was also a little bar there, doggy.
That was before, many times. I really, I really. Still remember.
I know, I, I never went in it, but it was. I know.
That's what you went to.
No, um.
It was practice on the green.
He just took.
I didn't get here until eighty five, so.
Yeah.
All softball teams used to practice on the green.
Did they really?
Sit on the steps, sit down.
Awesome. Okay.
Don't you remember the softball leagues in town?
Oh, I did, I, I played some, and it was, I can imagine a little bit.
That was a big deal.
I'll tell you that story sometime, my friend. Actually, Kenny Wilson is the one that got me to play for Cash Mitchell, uh, because I was playing in the Havens primarily in those days. I was a softball whore in those days. Kenny got me to, to play a couple of games for Cash.
My wife was an old girl.
And they used to have, they used to have three or four leagues, an A League and B League and C League.
Big deal.
It is. I don't even know if they have a softball league, but.
No, they don't, no, the beer.
Yeah.
So we don't have the parking.
Okay. That's the only answer. I don't have a final answer on the parking. Everything else I got.
But you must have the June thirty numbers for the audit.
Yeah, well, I can give you, I can give you what I have as my last.
And then I think it would be nice if you could give me.
Did you give us?
Paul Park and let can say the board of select knows me now.
Oh, I did not send the ARPA, you're right. I didn't have none on my list.
Yeah, the ARPA numbers are the only numbers, but that wasn't so much a budget number, it's just information.
Yes, well, I have that three twenty twenty two, the unallocated um, six hundred and sixty seven thousand as of June thirty.
That was their unallocated.
Unallocated, yeah.
At, as of June thirty of twenty twenty two, well, they bounced back.
Well, we gave them um, two hundred and fifty thousand plus or minus in revenue loss from ARPA.
Okay.
To make up for the bad year, so.
Okay.
That was applied. So what, what happened was because the programs themselves all lost monies, you know, um, they, that unallocated money was used for that. When we gave them ARPA money, they then applied that ARPA money to the appropriate programs, which brought the unallocated, you know, put the money back into unallocated, so.
That, that begs the point, should we go back to the, the protocol we had established where some salaries were going to be covered?
Yeah, it almost.
I think the number was like twenty grand.
Forty, I think it was forty, yeah, um, but um, I, I've asked Rick for a list of potential uses. Um, if, if the rec commission has plans for any of that and what they might, might be, so that you can see that as well. Ellen's out, so doesn't have quite as much handle on it. Because she manages it.
So as an example, the, the money broadly pays for lunch. That go, that goes into that one. That's not coming into general fund.
Correct.
Correct, but we, but we need to budget for an additional kitchen musician by the general. That's not making sense to me.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like.
Yeah, that's one that ought to be.
Yes.
Easy. Right, to make that adjustment. Feels like a problem. Or should, or should we just go back to the, the, what we had before, forty thousand dollars, like salary support, which would cover the.
It seemed like a reasonable number at that point, but.
For the entire increase position.
Yeah, now that it's a specific position, maybe you're right.
And to be transparent, we never took the forty because the forty hit at the COVID year. So at the time, we didn't take the forty because they weren't bringing in money, so we've never actually used any of the program fees.
Budgeting purposes, that might be the time.
But, yeah, we budgeted, we, we budgeted forty that year, but because of COVID, we never actually used, used, used the, we never actually took the forty from the program.
But now that the forty.
Well.
We're going to give it back, we're going to take it back.
We can complete the circle.
I like, I like, I like Susan's idea, the forty plus whatever the incremental is on the, the staff.
Change.
Good.
Do you have that amount? Yeah.
Difference?
Difference?
You'll be able to figure that out, okay? Mitch is gonna figure that out, and I'm gonna apply it to the numbers.
So you want the difference between going from the part-time to the full-time for the, uh? Yeah, and then what about the benefits too, though, because, um, I don't know, I don't want to make this.
Well, let's look at two numbers. Let's look at the difference.
I think we already said salary.
Yeah, let's look at the difference and let's look at what that total salary is. You know what I mean?
Yeah, because when you're doing.
By comparing this year, next year's number.
When you just do an additional hours benefits, is it the same?
Yeah, I guess what you would have budgeted in part-time to what it, what you budgeted, just see the difference between.
I'd say what I would have budgeted would be a three percent increase first of all. So the, uh, the incremental is twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Wait a second, difference was forty thousand?
There was somebody coming out of part-time.
Full-time.
Full-time.
Right, okay.
So sixteen hours represents twenty thousand over the years. Well, we not only increased the hours, we increased the position. So there's a raise that goes with that too. Now, with part-time, the full-time, we, 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 the position went from, um, a kitchen assistant to an assistant cook. So there's a, there's a, there's a classification change that goes with it.
Great rate.
Plus the number of hours.
It was a job shift.
Yeah. So it's a twenty, twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight, eighty-eight, is the difference between what she would have been paid if we kept her in the current position. As opposed to moving, as opposed to promoting her and, and.
So that would be.
That's the difference.
Six thousand?
Is that?
But that's the difference. What's the total?
Total's, well, the total's forty thousand. Her, her salary goes from twenty thousand to forty thousand, basically. And, and the difference is twenty thousand.
Yeah, the numbers.
So the forty that we had.
Four hours sounds like that.
Six is a good number?
Yeah, yeah, and just to throw something else out there, we, we have a lot of proposals for giving various, for, for compensating people the extra five hours. Who are already working overtime. I think Larry Santa Maria falls in that bucket, bucket big time, and I would be in favor of doing something like that.
Yeah, that, you know, maybe with this additional help, that number would be reduced for Larry, but I agree with him. Right.
I took six, I took sixty right off of full-time salaries.
Full-time salaries?
Yep, yeah, because that's in full-time salaries now.
That is, but are we talking about the program fees?
Perhaps.
Correct.
Be ten percent of the six hundred thousand. Do you want, do you want to be forty off the part-time or twenty off the full-time? I said, I just checked myself. I think. No. You're talking against this. So that's not a lot, I mean.
There's just. It will help. That original forty was to increase something nearby.
Not that much, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the additional amount that we gave them.
It, it does.
That's all part, that's all part of that program account, so senior meals, so. At the end of June thirty, senior meals was overdrawn by a hundred and forty dollars. It was close. Because we, because the general fund may get whole. It, it, that's why it was so close.
And we did that last year with twenty-six thousand, but we had to put in to make it whole.
Oh.
Right, that's the number.
That's what we.
Two thousand, twenty-two.
Correct, yes.
And this year, we think it's going to take us forty-five thousand to make it whole.
That's the report we received from Park and Russ.
And I can't remember the reason.
I think some of it was the food prices, right? I mean, sure.
And meals were down, were meals down too?
Somewhat, yeah.
Meals were down because.
Breakfast in particular were, were down.
Yeah.
But what was the other? One other program that they're no longer receiving. At the church, uh, the church is on rent.
No, it's, it's program fee offset.
I think it was just.
Offset was part-time before.
Okay.
And we didn't do it last.
We didn't, right, right, we didn't do it last year, right? Alright, so we had the, we had the forty in part-time in the past. So I don't know if it really matters. So the twenty is now full-time, and we want the forty still in the part-time. Mitch just needs to know where to allocate it in, in the budget. Does it really matter?
It's a full-time position. Well.
Actually, doing twenty, doing twenty in the full-time and forty.
That's what he's saying, yep.
Then Sue had some other questions on the senior meals.
Okay.
So when you mentioned the hundred dollar, that the, that the senior meal program broke even with our subsidy, is that in its own fund or is that?
No, that's all, that's all part of the program fund, so.
So, so, so we're putting in an additional, whatever, forty-five thousand compared to the twenty-six last year. Into the program fund, which already has six hundred thousand dollars of the balance. Um, we can reconsider that. In other words, we could shift the additional cost into the program.
And just have them use unallocated funds to balance it.
Thank you.
Absolutely doable. It's entirely up to you guys whether that you want to, want to do that.
I would really like to know how that six hundred. Decide whether it's.
Yes.
Such a short time.
Yeah, so the, well, yeah, it did build up this past year. It started.
Almost half.
It started at two seventy and we're up, went up to six sixty-seven.
What is that as a percentage? I'm not, if you happen to have it there as a percentage of their expenditures last year, how much?
Of, of the what percentages? In operating?
Yeah. Yes, in that fund.
Operating that fund?
Yeah, wondering how the six hundred thousand, what balance, how big is that compared to their?
Did that donation affect that fund?
No, donation is totally separate, totally separate.
Another one coming too, by the way. Or we think there's another one coming.
Sue, my, my brain's just not wrapping myself around that question, I, I'm afraid. I'm gonna be honest, I'm not sure what you're asking of me.
So we started last, we started the last completed year with the fund balance at two hundred and seventy thousand.
Correct.
We had revenues, we had expenditures, we ended up with six hundred thousand.
Yes.
What were those expenditures in total?
It's hard for me. The revenue and expenses, it's not, I'd have to break it out, yeah, well, you know what, I can, hold on, let me. I can do it different. I'm not gonna look at theirs, I'm gonna look at my munis. So I'm just looking at program fund, all expenditures.
Yes.
And let's see, I'm gonna total that. Um, for, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Seven hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So they've got almost a year's worth of expenditures sitting in their fund balance. That's what I was thinking about. Just it really seems, that seems out of proportion. Unless they have something.
Well, and the year before was only, uh, four hundred, so.
So let's shoot, let's shoot an email to Rick and ask him specifically what, what capital. What expenditures do they anticipate?
I've already sent that question to him, yes, yeah.
Out of that fund.
Yeah, he. I wasn't satisfied with the answer, so I wrote that. Sorry.
But what we want to do, this doesn't have to go through their commission first?
No, the only thing I request of Rick is that anytime he proposes something to be spent from the program fund. That his commission has, that he has support from his commission. I ask for that, because we don't want to. Just willy-nilly spend things without everybody being in the know.
Yeah.
So, um.
He would, he would be assiduous about it anyway.
He always does, but I just.
But it's, it's the appropriate check and balance.
It's my first question, you, you know what I mean?
The shape that you're referring to. Um, that came from them.
Like I said, the one I have, um, goes through the, and you'll, actually, it ends. It goes back to twenty eighteen, which is when we started doing this particular, because there wasn't really any back and forth between the two departments. Or if there was, I wasn't aware of it. I don't want to say there, yeah. I don't want to say anything, but, um, so you'll see that, um. I'll send that to everybody, and you'll see how it breaks down.
Good movement. I can use a quick break to go and unplug and free up the space. I used to do that every morning, but trying to be a good citizen.
I'll tell you what I was thinking.
I think it's a, yeah, alright.
Record a break?
Yes.
Record a break? Trey, we're taking a break, just wanna stop recording?
Alright, so what, um, so we were at the point where we were applying twenty thousand to. So we applied twenty thousand to full-time, which is the difference, and the forty thousand to part-time. Um, bringing the overall percentage five point two-nine.
Are you gonna put exactly twenty thousand or exactly the difference?
They said twenty and forty, right? Rounded numbers.
Just wanna make sure.
Yep, for a total of sixty even.
That works.
Alright. Alright, anything else, so I?
Get through all, all the open questions from the other day?
We, 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 we did, yes, um, and I forwarded, I forwarded.
We're gonna hear what else they want to spend their program fund on.
Uh, uh, other, other than that, right, so I forwarded to all of you, um, building inspectors of response. And the, um, uh, assessors' response, and, and I sent her that additional question, so we'll see if we get anything back on that.
Okay.
Think that answered all the questions. That you had.
There you go.
I think so.
Capital.
Capital.
Capital I do.
So.
Paid out of Rick's book.
There you go.
You just gotta pick up some records, something?
Yeah, yeah.
Recording joke.
Recording joke.
Oh, one other.
Yeah, I'm talking about what's left in the fund balance after all the things that we're proposing using out of fund balance. Have you talked about that? Or am I just?
Um, I, I haven't really done an analysis, other than we know what we have in fund balance, so we haven't overdrawn it. We, we haven't taken too much. We took, um, well, we'll take some more in capital, but, um. Uh, technology money, we're using most of that up. Okay, you know, and a couple of things when we talk about capital.
I think, yeah, we're using some for studies for Jamie.
Yeah, and capital, um, I'm just trying to think other operating stuff. There was something else I just thought of, and I, like, went out of my mind. In and out, just like that.
You, you closed out, you closed out some accounts three months ago, two months ago, that, yes, and there was a small, there was a small.
Well, that, yeah, that, that came from undesignedated fund.
Oh, I see.
Um, so I, I, maybe we're referring to the committed funds to see what we have in, in it, so that. You know, that just hit the bottom line, but it wasn't big, big dollars.
It was, it was tidying up.
Yeah.
Accounts. Good. Okay.
Alright, so on the capital, so what I've handed you this morning, um, is the overall capital plan. Which matches to the most current version I gave you on the upper, this one, the purple one. The purple one matches to what you currently have on this document that I handed the other day. So the two now mirror each other, um, so we can talk about some of the changes. Um, and, and then just as an aside, then the blue one, like I said, is, it's just a, a grouping of all the bonded projects. Which we'll talk about as well. Um, so some of the changes, um, that we made in capital. That you can work on this, I think they're all listed on this big one. In blue, yeah, so, um, the first one is engineer, engineering department asked for two items in the sidewalk. One is their standard every year, fifty thousand dollars a year to do maintenance of our current sidewalks. The second fifty thousand dollars was specifically a safe streets project, um, which she has that noted, um, in, in her report. So we have a significant amount of money in safe streets, um, so, um. Matt and I thought we would use that particular fifty thousand dollars from fund balance. As opposed to having it in capital, since we've already set that money aside.
Right.
Um, the second change we made, we've already discussed, the forty thousand dollars in public works for their maintenance program. We moved to operating, so that's now zero. Um, we've added, under the board of selectmen, Karen and I, um, received a quote. For that inventory project we discussed, and it came in at six thousand dollars, which was an amazing number, I thought. So Matt said we should add that back in, so I have added that in. Um, under town property, uh, building maintenance and improvements, there was sixty thousand dollars for a roof project at Town Hall South. We have some bonded money, um, left over from a roofing project at Public Works that we're gonna use instead. Um, so that's money already authorized to be used. We don't, we don't need to, um, do anything for that. So that brings us down to, uh, one thousand, seventy-three thousand, one million, sorry, seventy-three. Seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two, a point one percent, um, for a thousand, sixty dollars.
This, the, the theory was, uh, keep it consistent with what we've been doing, uh, because we continue to just talk about funding capital projects. That operating, so.
That million dollars feels like a good target.
Yeah, so too.
Guys are comfortable in.
So that, so that's reflected in, in this, um, seven, three, eight, ninety-two, yes, I just checked again. Um, so this capital, because the entire capital plan. Um, here under general fund.
Oh, alright, I see.
Okay, so, uh, so you see at the very end of, of the last page of the capital. Um, it's a total of ten million dollars or eleven million dollars for twenty twenty-four, but then underneath it's broken down.
Okay.
By how it's funded, so we're specifically talking that general fund number of one million seventy-three. Um, so when you approve. When you have your motions Monday, you'd be approving the entire capital plan. Um, I didn't make adjustments to outline years, which, you know, um.
This is a slight tangent here. Am I reading, somebody already noticed, the school board, it looks like they're proposing a bond. That's a really low number for them.
For them.
Yeah.
And, you know, now their budget is strong.
They've been banging the drum.
Yes.
On finding consistently for a while.
Yeah, and they go every year, yeah, they go every year. But then my only point is that's at least a manageable number with whatever we end up with.
And again, as I mentioned, uh, by the time we have to put the bond package together, there may well be. You know, six million sitting in the till for us, so we can take that dam out of there.
From the state.
Or we may want to include, keep it in there and then just offset the money some grant funds, because then we'd be authorized to do the project. Um, but we wouldn't have to bond for it, because, yes, yes, but we would authorize the project to go forward. You see what I mean? So, so by keeping it in the bond authorization, now we're authorized to, to do the project. If the money comes in from state grants, I don't have to bond for it.
Right, but it's going to appear on a budget referendum as.
Correct, as a project, as a project, yes.
Make a determination that the.
Right, so that's a conversation, yeah.
I'm just, without beating it way ahead of ourselves, but how would that information, the possibility of the bonding, coming, you know, the grant be available to people? Before they're voting, just by paying attention here?
We, we will, we will announce it. If we get that kind of money, there's gonna be, there's gonna be an announcement, there's gonna be pictures. Now, that's a, that's a substantial.
Well, and wait, and again, to Sue's point, it's like sort of a regional lake, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Minimum regional, you know, so, okay, hang on, we'll cross that bridge.
You got it.
Order of the dam.
Getting punchy, getting punchy.
MJ, just, uh, one point, well, at least one point of clarification. Uh, under fire, the emergency shelter generator, thirty-two Church Street, we, we have that on our ARPA, um, uh, list.
Okay.
So.
Okay, alright, so I can make that adjustment, yeah?
Which one, what's that?
The emergency shelter generator at thirty-two Church Street, which is what we approved at a recent meeting.
Yep, you're right, that comes out of bonding, that adjustment, good. That's why we're all looking at it, because.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Parker Rex is the only other one that we, and I haven't looked, right, okay, yeah, we got it, all right, pickleball courts, and Bittner's coming out of the ARPA funds. The Jacobs is our.
Safety communications infrastructure is.
It's all in the radio, on the radios. Charlie and Charlie's talking about that. It's, it's, there's, there's a new, I think it's a new band that they have to use for communications.
Okay.
And that's gonna require a change out of all the equipment.
And that is synchronized with the state. I presume every time a major communication project comes in, that it's really aware of that problem, making sure everybody can talk to everybody else.
I think that's why we're ready to change, so that we can accommodate it. Yeah, needless to say, it made a question about having the two communication centers, that's a discussion still.
There are different roles, there are different roles.
But it's, it just gets confusing, because they're called the same thing.
Yeah.
All right, but so this is five years from now, state's gonna be happy, we're gonna be happy, if the feds show up for some reason.
I don't know, talk.
Go that far.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Any chance you have at your disposal to write up that buyer sent, or buyer slash communications gave us at the capital, capital presentation? That would be a better description, I would think, than. I just mumbled around.
I was comfortable with those things. Overdoing that debate.
That was communications, sorry. Public safety infrastructure, that one for the three million?
Right. I was questioning, would there be any, any grant opportunities after that?
Let me just, probably repeating myself on this one, jumping around a little bit, but, so there's a proposal for bathrooms, restrooms at Pitt Parks North, Septic Well, that's already building, I mean, it's already been done. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, was it in it?
It's already, it's already been done. We already approved.
So that's in the bonding?
Which one's that?
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I was gonna say, that space up there could not be more accessed by more people, it's just fabulous, but that's my point, okay, they put me in the pickleball.
In support of the two-fifties.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it, a little, it's still, if anything, it's potentially a little bit under facilitated.
Wait a second.
So it's a good thing.
Build new restrooms, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's different. That is two different things. We already approved, out of ARPA funds, the renovation of the bathrooms down at the closest to Route seventy-seven.
Okay.
That was, those were rehabbed. This is a new, a new building up on the north side, right, to get, and, you know, bathrooms, to get accommodations up there, so folks, because that has become the epicenter of that.
The north side meaning the skate park.
City park, pickleball, and golf.
I think you said they have like one port.
Yeah, there's one porta potty, and a parking lot, frankly, parking lot.
Am I the only one who doesn't, I don't agree with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? The reason is, I know a lot of people have gone up there and use it, but, so go to the bathroom before you leave your house. People aren't going there for twelve hours, they're going there for a few hours, and we are making an investment in the existing facility, so you can walk over there and use it. I mean, I don't see two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bathroom. They're in the woods, it doesn't make any sense to me. Just makes two cents.
There's no question that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars seems like a lot, but to lose point, I think the, the physical that, that place is changing, I mean, it's becoming a, you know, it's becoming a Jacobs Beach North.
Yeah, it's lower.
It's a community center. I understand what things cost now, and I was struggling with it myself, but.
Here's why, there's infrastructure work that needs to be, they don't have electricity, or they have to either drill a well, again, if they have to drill a well, it says.
Well. It's fitting us work negative to around, we've already got a backdoor month there. We could expand it a little bit, we could cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I agree with Susan, it's a lot of money, but I, I also think that it's becoming a, it's becoming a recreational center, and if we ever build a road through to Long Hill, it's just gonna multiply more and more, and it, you know, several miles from. I understand, a lot of money, and it seems strange, and I wish we had planned a more centralized group one, first room, you know, first area, you know, had been more centralized, you know, I agree with Susan.
Let me see if I can go back to, and see if we can get some tighter numbers, because it's, that's a place, that's just a place, right, back of an napkin, place holder, so, let's see if we can get some smart. By the way, you don't have.
I think we had already asked that question, because the first time he came, he had this other type of system, which quote unquote wouldn't require all of the infrastructure. But it ended up being more expensive. Mechanics of it just didn't make sense.
So, so, by the way, we don't have to come out of today or Monday, with our bond package, that bond package will be done at our.
Well, the final, we typically like have something for me to take to Matt Ritter, don't we?
Yeah, but we can always, we can always.
He can still be adjusted, yes. So we would start.
This will be, this will be in here when we make the presentation to the Board of Finance, but it will be with a question mark as to whether or not we're actually gonna go. Is that?
Rather not see it, let me make a couple of other points. East River Preserve, fabulous, well-used. No, because you go before you leave the house. People go to play disc golf, we asked Rick the question of how long it'd be, well, you played recently, how long, how long does your.
It's, it's under two hours.
How long do people go to play pickleball?
Ninety minutes.
I really don't think we need an additional restaurant.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of a delicate way of putting it, demographics may argue against that. Think a little bit. I understand your point, and two fifty is a lot of money, you're, I'm picturing something comparable to what's down at like Jacobs, right? A cinder block structure with essentially two bathrooms.
That, that's what I struggle with.
If it's that simple, maybe.
I can get by, you know, the need for it there, I wish the facility we had up there was more centralized, so we didn't have that two-on-one piece of property. That's illogical, but when you, the problem is, to Matt's point, is that there's no, around the corner, there's but a parking lot, you know, there's no well, and the water, electricity, and all the rest of it. I, you know, two fifty is a lot, and I, I don't wanna build a monument, but when you start doing a big system and a well, it's a lot of it.
What about a couple of super duper porta potties, you know, what would be the break even point for renting those by the month compared to Spain?
I think that's what he looked into first, because this isn't the first time, he, he had another option first.
Trailer, wasn't it one of those? Right?
Yeah, and with some fancy, you know, composting thing, da-da-da-da-da, and the bottom line is, the mechanics of it just didn't work. A little bit like Public Works trailer, when Mark and Rec had a trailer down there, or whatever, it, it's a stopgap, but you know, if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it, and I do think that the way that that area is developed is recreational area, and more skilled. Especially when Public Works gets up there, and, you know, we build the through road and everything, that area is just gonna become more and more used. I personally. Two fifty is a lot, I understand, I don't like it, but.
Well, I think that the thing that, I think you said, it may not be two fifty, you know. I mean, you could theoretically buy, build one bathroom that is unisex, changing table, handicap. And there it is, and maybe that, but I, you still have to drill the well and the septic, but you might be able to, you know, reduce the facility itself a little bit. I don't, yeah.
Well, I'm not sure, it's the facility itself, it's the concept.
It's the concept, it's the lack of a need. Yeah, I see, okay.
Is it something?
Not a budget question now, I don't think.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to.
Question is, do we leave the placeholder in there, or don't we?
Would you consider having that paid by ARPA funds, so it comes out of bonding, and now it's still under consideration, but we're not budgeting for anything yet? It takes, it takes it out of the equation today, and you can determine it next week if you want, but it would take it out of the bonding, it's just a suggestion.
By the way, we need, we need to do, I should have done, should have done this earlier, but that's why I passed out the ARPA spreadsheet. I think we had originally three hundred fifty thousand for basketball courts up there. Now we're taking some of it out of ARPA funds, now we're taking some of it for the pickleball, right? To build a pickleball courts. What's left over? So if we've already allocated it, does that make it any more palatable?
No, I think Susan's point is just the philosophical concept of doing it. And I, you know.
Right, and that's, so that's why I was making that recommendation, so it comes out of the bonding, so we're.
Don't have to deal with it now.
Right, you don't have to deal with it today or Monday.
I mean, it's a financial manipulation, that's fine.
It's entirely left to go, I'm just throwing it out as a suggestion.
I, I, I would, without beating this completely to death, and not to sound argumentative, but the existing bathrooms are for most people would be a driving distance from, from the base of the skate park to go back, and it's, it's, it's sort of one facility, but it's a massive facility. The park is wonderful, and it's a great resource for us, and so if that was a completely separate park, let's say it was on, you know, the fields on Long Hill, right, we'd say, well, this bathroom's down in the fields on Long Hill, you can drive down there. I, I just don't see it as being being serviceable by the existing.
And you're suggesting it's two separate compounds, basically.
And, and just the way it happens to be laid out in the geography of the park.
Right, and that was my point, ideally, it would have been nice to have one centralized building, you know, right at the corner there or something, but.
Also, there's a fishing trail along there, and there's considerable hiking trails, so there's a lot that we get out of, a lot of recreation.
Well, that's the point, I'd rather make do it, you know, if the road ever does go through somewhere new.
Be busier.
Anyway, I, I hear you respect that a lot, I mean, I get it, it's nice to.
Make sure we're being.
The solution is, we're, we're gonna leave it on here, but we're not.
No, I thought the solution was, we'll take it off for now, and we'll.
It's gonna stay on the plan.
It's on here, but it's a hundred dollars, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right, it's gonna stay on the plan, but I'm gonna apply ARPA to it. And then, then I think Sue will be feel more confident, comfortable.
With Monday, yes, definitely, definitely. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Does it need to be in, in the two thousand twenty-four year?
Well, twenty-four, twenty-five is, oh, well, nevermind, that's not, I was gonna say, but on me, but that's.
Put it in twenty-five if you'd like, and then, you can always accelerate it.
It's a two-year bonding package for us anyway, right, it would still be a little bond.
No, it's not showing up.
Becomes ARPA then.
Oh, it will be, I see, okay.
I would leave it in twenty-four, just because we kind of have to spend that money by twenty-six, so why, why not do something with it? I, I would rather leave it in twenty-four, but as, as an ARPA consideration, instead of a bonding consideration. I kind of like, I know in a perfect world, we would have one thing, but we can't, and I, and I feel like we spend so much money on, on infrastructure and things that the public doesn't see, but that we need, and I love it when we do something that we can say, oh, we, we just increased the pickleball courts, and we have new bathrooms, and we're gonna get shade at the beach, you know, things that suddenly, gosh, oh, good things are happening, more benches on the green, better lighting on the green, you know, because we, so much of this is necessary.
You just said something that, you know, hurt my, I wonder if it's ever been examined how much it would cost, rather than to, to build one in the corner there, more centralized, and eliminate the first one, can, is piping cheaper than drilling new wells and drilling?
Just upgrade that one, yes, we just upgraded that one.
I know, I, oh boy, I know. But, you know, is piping cheaper than building all new, and then, you know, it, I, you know, I don't know, it'd be an interesting number to get.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
You know, this one centralized one eliminated, and I understand, and I don't like to do it for anyone else, but if we're looking at the big picture, we gotta look at the big picture. You know, one right at the corner there, make it a real thing.
Once it's built, what do you save by taking it down?
Going to well.
Don't, you leave it there as a, you know, and the septic, I mean, piping, you're talking, maybe, what, thousand feet of piping versus, you know, two new systems.
It's all downhill, too, isn't it? From the corner.
I'm by the septic, yeah, I should probably septic down by the river there, it's already problematic.
Did I hear you change the two fifty from twenty-four to twenty-five, or are we leaving it in twenty-four? Okay, I, I was doing other things, I just wondered.
Yeah, because in the future, then you're talking double maintenance, right, double building, double roofs, double everything later on.
Yeah, we could definitely have a pick and look at that.
Um, I had a question about the roof, I'm sorry, was there money for a new roof for the police department in here somewhere, and is it further out?
It's ARPA funds under twenty twenty-four, roof replacement.
But, no, there was. But aren't they also looking at renovation to that whole building?
They are.
Yeah, there is. In which case, would it possibly become a two-story building?
That has not, I have not had that level of discussion.
Okay.
What they need is expanded capacity for female locker rooms.
Right, and then their original. So, okay. That's sort of the cost of not moving the master course.
Yeah.
So.
Use the port garage.
So you guys had a question regarding the three point two million dollars for communications, this is a breakdown of the three point two communications? West?
Thank you.
This company is in Guilford, that we're gonna go and purchase it.
I think we've done business with them.
Yeah, that's interesting, I mean.
Well, this brings up a question, though, this is a viable item, unless somebody's saying this is all source.
That would be determined before we, before we purchased, so, you know, this is just the quote to get a number for bonding at this point. What is it?
It's, it's the ra, it's the radio, it's, it's radio towers, the, the simulcast, all of these are the eight locations, right? Why does it say seven, six simulcast when we have? That's, that's probably so we can be part of the network for the, what is it, the the relationship we have for responding to their stuff, they respond to ours, mutual aid, I'm sorry.
Matt, it's just numbered down here at the very bottom, state bid.
Oh, the state bid, yeah, there you go, state bid, there it is.
So you can't go slow source?
Yep.
Doesn't mean that we can't get this.
No, it doesn't.
It does not, it just means that we don't have to, because there is a bid already in.
Yeah, so that's a good point, the question is, you know, the, the, the cost of development of RFP, because we're gonna have to hire somebody to do that, and then also, you know, just the posting and all that stuff, so. Sorry.
Tactical is a company that many municipalities are using, and they normally come in with the best bids anyway. I would guess that they're giving Guilford a pretty decent price.
John Moffat is volunteer firefighter. Tactical. He's a chief, a deputy chief of one of them. He's a cheaper, that'd be cheaper one than the firehouse. Wow. He's, he's familiar on the use side. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. For helpful information.
And I totally don't remember this. Is this to replace things we have or just to upgrade?
Replace, this is a replacer.
Okay.
All those repeaters, you see that those are.
How old the existing is for this probably dramatic technology.
So with the few little things we did today, the bonding number was dropping.
I took two things out. So something I missed, I'm at nine point five almost.
I'm looking at. My, wait, what? The bond, I'm looking at the highlighted bond, uh. Oh, nine point nine over there. Was it nine point, you're at nine point one now, minus about four hundred.
Four hundred thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the two-year. We bond for two years. Sorry, she's looking at the eight twelve. Uh, yeah.
Oh, you have the eight twelve as well. Oh, great.
Because we bond for two years, so you need to look at the eight twelve as well. Maybe there's something there that you wanna consider. You're, you're.
I got you.
We're both right, Lou. We're just looking at different numbers.
No, no, you're more correct.
No, 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 no. We typically bond for two years. Obviously, it's not something you have to do, but I've included that in. So the nine nine is down to nine five. A little under nine.
And what, what, what was the last bonding package that we put before the voters?
Seven? No, not for us.
Two years, two, two years ago?
Yeah, we know, we didn't have.
I felt like it was low. Ours was low.
But the school is.
So I mean, I guess maybe one way of looking at it is between the two of them, within sight of what the previous one is.
It might be a little higher.
It helps if there's so low, but they must have really bored out, given the, given the budget. Which is really, actually, compared to what some other towns are, to your point. We're in good shape.
Uh, so the last time we went out, um, the total request for the town was four point five million and the total request for the board guide was six point two million.
So it was ten million, yeah.
It's ten million altogether.
Like we'd be slightly more than that, yeah.
Yeah, and then for your final number, once you determine which ones in your final numbers, we will add bonding costs to these numbers. Work with our financial advisor to determine what those are.
Do we really have any, not have anything we're thinking about for the next time in two years? There's nothing substantial. Okay, we're certain public works.
Yeah, it's a good one. It's one point three, right?
I mean, sometimes it's not nothing, but it's like.
But it's. You're smarter than I was, so you looked at the summary sheet.
I tried to be helpful.
But if we did wanna push something off, we'd be pushing it off for two years, not until next year.
Right.
Until next year doesn't help us.
Yeah.
Correct, right.
Which I'll be very damned. Necessary.
That's why I didn't suggest that to the bathroom discussion because it's still in the, still in the mix, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, we could do something, the, the backhoe, maybe, you know, I could, let me talk to, let's talk to Dave Castro. See, uh, that the backhoe needs to be in twenty twenty five.
Wasn't that all part of his, sort of like, don't need this, but I need this? What was the piece of equipment that he gave up?
Yeah, there was something.
Was it the bucket truck? No.
No, we did that with, we did that in his current year allocation.
So maybe, I mean, he's very, very interested in the business case for each of his items.
Yeah, that was very impressive, I thought.
See if there's any backup. Request.
The big H PEX government, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Did a couple of times, they need a big one, they need to rent.
Made a ton of sense.
I think that's somewhere over by my feet niche. There we go, right? His request only includes a, a detailed quote. And again, it's just an authorization. We could choose not to spend it for a couple of, you, you, you know what I mean, or whatever.
The issue is the size of it going to the.
Yes, that's right. I understand. Yep.
So if I, and I'll take, uh, obviously, uh, responsibility for getting definitive information on the communications infrastructure. If there's grant, we'll be there, right? Uh, but more importantly, uh, the Lake Forest lot, because we could pick three and a half million of this, that would, that would be huge.
Yeah, that changed the whole equation. I mean, it just looks much more manageable.
Right, but, and let me go back to Jans on that too, because it, it, it may not be a full replacement as much as it is, uh, some changes to it, so. Let me, let me, let me, let me get to the bottom of that.
There's also in Park and Rec, there's sixty thousand in twenty twenty five for replaced insulation inside air handler units. Is that in, uh, town, that community center? Right?
I'm assuming so.
Sixty thousand. It says HVAC upgrade, replace insulation. It sounds an awful lot like it's got nothing to do with the school presentation that we've recently had.
There's a.
It's an operating difference. It's about the fourth or fifth thing down on the second page.
I'm gonna look up, see if I.
Says HVAC.
That's Park and Rec.
Yeah.
It must be the community center. Oh, it seems like a silly they have.
Yeah.
Insulation inside.
It's gonna be in those bathrooms.
They're gonna be very quiet.
It'd be very cold.
And that's an HVAC project, which we might be able to use bonded energy efficiency money.
Wow, okay.
So we always look for the.
It's under general fund anyway.
Yeah, it's under general fund, but next year, when we discuss that, I would probably recommend using that out of code bonded money. Any of those types of efficiency.
So that's kind of the. That's.
Two oh two, and the two, and the first two, or the second two fifty is coming up. Shelter and the restaurants.
And then back on general fund, the second vehicle for the building official, the first vehicle, did we do one this year? I know they asked for, I'm confused about what we.
Yeah, I think she got.
Health got one, somebody.
No, she, no, she got a new one because she, she, she was getting, she couldn't get into certain sites. So I'm pretty sure she asked.
There's an issue with the exhaust.
Right, right. So there's one new one. So in this department, we have the full-time building official, the administrative assistant, who doesn't use one, permit technician, who I.
No.
Doesn't seem like it warrants two vehicles devoted to. She will be the next one to answer.
Yeah, that was good.
I think the, she's using a vehicle, but the, the part-time building inspectors are all using their own vehicles, I think. And I wonder why that's a problem.
Let's get the, MJ, let's get the.
Yeah, I mean, the mileage thing is.
Mileage, six, five cents.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I sign those every month and they're five to six hundred bucks, uh, for local ones. About, you know, one day, these guys are doing one day.
One day a week.
The expenses that that covers. About a vehicle, we're still maintaining.
Well, and by the way, and, and vehicle can only be used by one person at a time.
Right, is there any hand-me-downs? Let's just get a new one for those hard-time people. Don't want a vehicle that's scrapped out. Is there an old police car to be used for that?
Okay, see, they need to go on site, construction sites too, so that was, that was one of the, one of the explorations.
But your, but your police vehicles are now the, the SUVs anyways, right? Yeah, just a, a thought. I mean, to have, have part-time people driving a brand-new vehicle.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Having a vehicle, I agree with. Having, having a town vehicle to go on those sites, I would agree with.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna take it out?
Two full hundreds, yeah.
So. Let's just put a call in, make sure that it's still safe to drive. That's the only consideration, but.
I'd just love to be reminded as to why she asked for it before we take it out.
See what I, I'm looking there. We just go from program to program.
Are there any other vehicles in the capital, somebody's?
I would, um, let's see what the answer is, but.
All right, um, she says, um, I'm asking for a capital budget thirty eight five to purchase a four-wheel-drive hybrid vehicle as a second means of transportation for the building department. The Crown Vic car assigned to the building department has been expired for over a year. As of this moment, the building department was approved for one new vehicle that is estimated to arrive later on this month, well, uh, November twenty one. This vehicle is to replace the building department truck that has expired earlier this year. With my deputy inspectors and I having access to just one vehicle to perform our ten-plus daily inspections, it has become quite cumbersome for me when I need to go to an emergency and or enact and on a last-minute inspection. For these reasons, I'm asking for a capital budget to purchase an additional four-wheel drive.
So it isn't really an additional, they've got to.
They've got to, yeah.
So what does expired mean when it goes references the truck?
I, I think the law of process told them, it's, it's done now.
And the Crown Vic can't be good.
The Crown Vic is good, yeah, oh, forget it.
The savings we'd have just a mileage probably would be.
I'm intrigued at the former police, but I mean, you know, maybe that's not the answer.
And, and now the cost of repairs and things.
Actually, that discussion, the idle hours on the police vehicles are what make them worse, was when they were dumb, remember?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if you got a chief's car or something like that is one thing, but.
Miles, they retire them at, you know, eighty or ninety to a hundred and ten thousand miles, but the engine hours are twice that. They say three times that. I think that's what chiefs say.
Okay.
I'll just add that, the inventory that Karen, and one of the things we wanted in the inventory was partially to, to answer those questions that you've been asking. You know, then hopefully with, with that new system, we'll have a better handle on what we have, the condition they're in. You, you, you know, that, that type of thing. So hope, hopefully we'll have a, hopefully we'll be able to answer those questions on a annual basis.
And along the lines.
So wait to fix this, please, I think, you just, oh, no, no. That, um, that second vehicle can be used by each one of the part-time inspectors because they come in on different days.
Right. Right. No, that, that, that's fine. I, I just, I think, I think having a vehicle makes sense. Having a brand-new vehicle, I don't think it's necessary for that.
Other than I know she's always looking for something four-wheel drive because they go to construction sites and that's been a problem with some of the cars that they've been told they could use. So that, that I know has been an issue.
And let's pull the mileage, let's pull the, can you do that easily? Pull the.
For what?
For the mileage submission.
The numbers.
Oh, oh.
Right, just subtracting that out, let's do this.
Specifically for the building department?
Yeah.
Sounds like she's saying problems that the building, building inspectors are sometimes using the one good car and that she needs to use it, she can't. So I guess so, you could just have her use it and they use it all the time and it's sitting there.
Right.
And I wonder if she, maybe she's suggesting a new one because of the need to go hybrid.
Well, yeah.
Full plug on that.
Yeah.
Hate to do it, but.
Well, I, I need to do that too. I don't wanna buy any new vehicles unless we can buy a hybrid.
Yes, yes. New as an additional vehicles or new as a brand of vehicles?
Any new, any new vehicle, any, any purchase that we make, should be, should be hybrid.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Awesome.
I just had Darnley request to come up with that.
But let's, let's leave it in there. We can take it out.
Inventory thing you were talking about, though, that would also help us in planning a situation where, okay, maybe the building department doesn't need a second new vehicle, but maybe somebody else like Kevin, you know, his truck might be timing out or something.
Zach was, Zach was thinking of it.
You tend to do with.
Does it not have a regular front system drop back? Was it a full inventory?
They have tried to do that already.
Police should mention that Kevin's two thousand and eight was down at the shop and they're telling him, you shouldn't be driving it.
Look at Kevin.
Oh, I know that truck. I remember buying it and we bought it.
Yeah, the red one. So we may have to, we may have to accelerate.
Well, there's a perfect situation of getting it, it should be driving.
Oh, no, it's dead.
It's dead now.
But you got, you got nothing in here for that, though.
So I'll send you a synopsis from Public Works.
Right.
And the question is, it's, in order to replace all the, all the Frank stuff is rotting out on the back, right? And it's about, it's about three grand in parts and about a couple thousand dollars in labor.
And all you're doing is stop, get.
In terms of reusing vehicles, um, where, uh, Public Works has a vehicle, uh, to be used as a whole pickup truck. We're gonna give that to the golf course. So that we stop doing mileage for both Ted and Serge, because they're, they're, you know, we're, we're doing mileage reimbursement.
Yeah, every time they come here.
They don't have a vehicle. It's, it's every time they come downtown, every time they have to go pick up supplies or whatever, they're using their own personal cars. We've got it. We're running it to the ground, so.
Can we, I mean, we don't have to decide. Can we just budget for one car and then figure out where to, you know? And then as we get more information, as we get the study done and we see about Kevin's vehicle, kind of decide how to deploy it then, but.
Wouldn't one car, which department?
Instead of a dedicated car for the building department.
Well, you know, it's interesting, um, this may not, this may be incompatible, but there's also a vehicle for, uh, it has a health. So I'm just wondering if there's any way, awesome, that one vehicle for both of those departments, or is it gonna be incompatible? They're, they're, they're hoping to be reaching for the keys at the same time.
Next year, look at that.
Creating a crisis.
Create conflict, but boy, it'd be nice if they could somehow share it.
Yeah, I have an answer to the question on how much we've paid in mileage. So for, I asked you to do a full year, so in fiscal year twenty two, um, we paid out eight thousand seventy dollars.
Four years you're paying for one of these things.
But you're not, because that includes things like fuel. Right, we're not paying.
Matt, you're convinced that the, uh, a used police vehicle would not be usable for just bouncing around town looking at sites?
Uh, it might be, depending which one it was, but, you know, especially if it's one of the chief's cars, they're good, but the patrol cars, they're not like Crown Vics, they don't last forever.
I know, but they're still, they're still, they're still running, which is better than some of the other vehicles we got out there.
Yeah, it's a retrofit, pulling the radios out, putting the seats back.
That's true.
I don't know, I just, you know, they're just not, but they used to be.
So we could, instead of assigning that to the building department, we could assign it to Town Hall South. You know, and then, and then if, for optics, for optics, then I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
Right, so. Let's, let's get, you know, if we had the inventory, you'd be able to pull it up right now, right? But the health department already have two vehicles, so I think we just turned back in the Prius, right?
Yeah, because she recently had one, yeah.
The health department has some need for four-wheel as well, because they're, they're also going out when they're doing test pits on.
And that's what they want. That's what they have in next year.
Yeah.
Looks like. I'm not sure why, it's five hundred dollars apart, but it sounds like it's the same vehicle.
Hold on, I'm gonna tell you, every, every single vehicle we've budgeted for in the last, every department has called me and said, I need three thousand more, I need this much, you know, the price we put in for the budget isn't even coming in, and I know because I paid through the roof for my Honda Civic, so I know. These numbers are not even going to be enough.
Oddly enough, maybe it's quirky moment here, where with what Tesla did, like they're putting pressure on everybody. Like they slashed their car prices and like all the other manufacturers are having to respond to that a little bit.
Well, they gotta respond to the tax credit, but they're, and, and the market's changed.
Anyway, for the most part, you're right. The last three years have been a horror show trying to buy cars.
Correct, so you'll see in the current year's budget, all the vehicles are, are overdraft, she know are overs.
We're just gonna put that, we're gonna call it Town Hall South vehicle and then we'll do some, we'll do some. MJ, let's get a, let's get a current inventory, who's got what, uh, which department has what, uh, and who has needs. Well, the only other need you can see vehicle-wise, I think, is next year. Uh, as we've done some replacements of the, the primary vehicles that. Uh, as we've done some replacements of the the primary vehicles they have in the last few years.
And you want me to concentrate specifically on Town Hall South at this point? Okay. So I'm going to say.
And then we need a larger discussion with the Public Works uh, relative to the reuse of the police vehicles. What's their recommendation?
I'm just going to call it vehicle replacement and I'm going to put it as Town Hall South.
Honestly, the answer to be if there was one, so people for two different requests. When there was overlapping, somebody would use their own vehicle and submit a mileage request. That would be the, that was, that's the safety top.
That's right. It's not like they can't go and take care of an emergency.
So I'm not going to do this job today.
Unless they need a four wheel drive and their own personal vehicle, listen.
Do you want me to move the health request for next year?
I thought it was so elegant.
In that same line, Town Hall South?
You are correct.
So they're, so move, we'll move the. So then we'll have one line, Town Hall South, vehicle replacement, and it's going to replace the health department one too.
Kind of thinking.
You might get that on a, you might get that on a schedule, you do the police, you know, one, one a year to cycle through Town Hall South.
So it's not going to change the bottom line. It's just where we have it allocated.
Is the sidewalk expansion route one to Safe Streets Reserve, is that, is that the expansion of Boston Street to Route One or are you talking about literally on Route One?
On, on Route One.
On Route One. So it's it's where that other thing was proposed that didn't happen.
Wait, go back. I missed the question.
Project description, sidewalk expansion through one and then parentheses, Safe Streets Reserve. So I know we're going to expand the sidewalk on Boston Street.
Yeah, that's true.
So I didn't know if this project was that or a further new sidewalk on on Route One itself.
Well, I I need to check with Janice on that. I'm trying to remember. There's a couple of things on the State C's transfer force for additional sidewalks, uh, which includes a piece on the west side to get over to Bishop's.
Stand on that side. That's what this is. I, you know, I got, I just was thinking about that.
It's along Route One, specifically the wording is along.
I just remembered now. I was thinking of that, you know, um, very controversial sidewalk slash bike path, whatever. That's not what it is.
It's to build new sidewalks on Route One to make connections, to make connections where they're missing and to fill in the gaps in the in the.
I just.
So like right now, it ends somewhere around.
Three mile.
Three mile?
It raised according to strawberry and two miles.
Okay, and then the idea would.
And there are, there are even some gaps in the carburetor.
Well, except for crossing Route One.
Yeah, except for crossing Route One.
Yeah.
But we'll get, we'll get the state to to give us permission on crossing, so. Um, and that makes all sense in world because that's walkability for the apartments, uh, right down there to go shopping. Makes it makes it safe. So there's also a discussion about the reconfiguration on the the sidewalks and crosswalks uh, at the River Street and Route One where the mobile station is. Because uh, the crosswalks are such that if you're on one corner to get um, to uh, another corner, you might have to go three ways around because there's not a crosswalk all the way across. And so that might uh, require some reconfiguration. The eighty, the eighty, because that 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 then, soon as you start touching that stuff, now you have to be eighty eight compliant and redo the 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 curving, so.
At least there's a light.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's, I'm not going to say it's as used as state street, but it's more than. I would imagine.
I want to have these commercial districts.
Well, yeah.
And the other thing, the other piece is to finish aside that 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 corner, that mobile corner at the sidewalks coming down River Street that stops when you get to uh, the no, Riting or whatever, the Volgrings, I'm sorry. It stops right there and then there's nothing all the way out.
Yeah, so odd.
Yeah. There was. That's your line. Yeah.
Easy pick, I mean, it's short distance.
Yeah. And eventually, we do want to do the east side to go from where uh, the 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 current sidewalk is planned on the large street.
Right now, if you're walking longer, you know, if you're doing the loop around.
Yeah, people go through the. Even that, there's a stretch in front of it, so. Okay.
We want Gene to be safe when he's doing his walk.
If that is, that that loop around River Street. I don't know because I drive it so much.
See so many people work. And we got, and we got over that sharp turn.
I walk it. I walk it. That's one of my walks. I go down there.
Okay.
Okay, so we, um, we changed the bottom line. So we haven't changed the bottom line of the request.
On what?
In in the operating, the capital.
The operator.
Operating capital, yeah. We haven't changed that. But the only thing I'm doing is changing the wording for the vehicle at Town Hall South. So we're still at one million seventy three, eight ninety two. We changed the bonding, um, but but not the capital.
And we're paying for the unnecessary bathrooms with Arpan. You are never to use them.
I'll go first.
Yeah, put on the doors.
Myself. If warranted, we are going to use Arpan money.
They'll be a solid. Red slash.
All right. You want to cover revenue adjust for?
Oh, we did make an adjustment to revenue of our, I should say, I made an adjustment to revenue. I was asked to make an adjustment in youth and family services.
Yep.
And I brought that up to a hundred and seventy four thousand. Which is.
What's a lot?
Uh, it's uh, one four three, which is services, um, which is half the amount between the almost two fourteen that we brought in in twenty two to the one thirty five. It's talking to you fifty percent to one seventy four.
Seventy four, I like it.
Bringing the bottom line to a twelve point six seven percent increase.
Right.
In in um, revenue. That was the only line I I was asked to look at.
Anybody else have any, uh? Return.
Sure, then Landry won't like that, but that's. But in point, you know, twenty twenty two, she brought in two thirteen. She's already at one oh seven halfway through, so. You know, that one seventy four. It could still be, yeah. Still be low, but like like Matt had asked, it did fifty percent.
Cool.
We did adjust the um, health department for a proposed fee increase, so the 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 fee increase subcommittee needs to do, get work on that. Hint, hint, hint.
Is that you?
Oh, I just lost my battery. Oh, no. And and it didn't even give me any warning. Look at that. It just like went out.
We're on target for one thirty, right? Oh, yes. Okay. So I gotta, I gotta, I gotta blow out. I'm gonna tell, those aren't lethal.
You're really good when you have vanilla ice cream.
That was your job.
I know.
A chunk of wine.
We're down, we're down to the last, um, half a dozen. Biscotti that we made. And kind of they start off hard, so it doesn't, there's nothing clean as a stale biscotti, branded coffee anyway, different, man, it's so good. It's one of those things. Why do I, why do I wait for a coffee to go over that line? Oh, that's nice.
I know.
Most things just look red line. Yeah. Good for perfect.
Wondering how long a battery life is.
Yeah.
Not long enough.
Not long enough.
And the bottom line is the half lights in the first, after the first two years, I don't care how robust they say they are, they start to drop off.
I find a remarkable difference between HP batteries and Mac iPad batteries. And I charge my mind on, plug it nonstop at home. My iPad lasts forever.
Interesting. I have a Yoga, which I think is, uh, used to be IBM, the Chinese company. It is, it's been the best laptop. Goes and goes and goes. Same thing you're saying, long battery life, no pro, no glitches, I guess it's.
Each complaint about my HP, and the problem is, is that my wife said one apple, three of my HP.
Yeah. Well, we're meeting Monday.
No, I mean, are we done here today?
I think we're going to hear revenue, otherwise, I mean, I'd love to get a jump on. I gotta be amped up by noon.
Your revenue?
Yeah, we finished it. I said, I met twelve point six seven percent in revenue. With those just a couple of adjustments.
Decision with that spreadsheet where you calculate putting in the grand list increase, sort of that final step that you did for us.
The mill rate front?
Yeah.
I I'll go and work on that today, so. I can send you those preliminary numbers. I I I don't have that. No.
Grand list, grand list grew by thirty, thirty percent. I just didn't. But that doesn't mean. What does that translate into? Well, in a perfect world, in a perfect world where you didn't, you know, increase the budget at all, and then it would, it would be a thirty percent drop in the mill rate, thirty three percent drop in the mill rate, which would take it down to twenty two and change. But the reality is we're looking at close to five million dollars in additional expenses, right? Which is going to probably bring that back up to twenty five or twenty six would be my, I I I'm I'd be curious to see.
Yeah, I'll work on those preliminary numbers today. Yep.
Twenty six, maybe twenty seven. So the, so the overall, there will be a mill rate increase, but it's going to be not a rate increase. No, there will be a mill rate decrease.
It'd be a budgetary increase.
Here's, here's, uh, the question. Okay, I'm with you. Here's the way we should look at this, right? Let's take the old grand list, all right? And the new spending plan and find out what that would have taken the uh, mill rates of. Okay, that'd be a good point. Now, you know, there are always a bunch of things you can't, you can't really look at that number as being valid because there is always grand list growth.
Right, right.
So, you know, as opposed to the revow growth, right? Uh, so.
Do we know, can we find out what that is? Is that possible or is it just all buried?
Be an average or a ballpark.
Just what the, what the new growth would have been separate from the revow.
Yeah, that is an interesting question. So you want to ask back any of that question for me, please? If if it's possible, if there's, if there's a way to extract the data, um. So, but then, but then the the, as I said, um, the alternative way to look at it is what would it have been, uh, had we not had, uh, had we used the same grand list, right? With the new spending plan. But then you, then there's all these permutations, right? Do we add in the additional three hundred fifty thousand dollars in local revenue that we know that we're budgeting for with this new budget?
Right.
Uh, I think we have to, you know, we have to put that in. So really, the only thing that would change would be taxes. If we were to utilize the uh, the local revenue component that's been developed here that we just talked about. As it, as her, as her. Because that's a separate part of that spreadsheet, right? Where you drop down the um, local revenues, which determines what we need to, local and then state revenues, uh, which determines. I think we can do that. So use, use our current revenue forecast for the ones we have here, all right? Uh, plus the state is being, it being constant, all right? Uh, which is always a crap shoot, right? Got to even talk about that piece. And uh, against the new spending plan and the old grant list. So the old grand list with the new uh, local revenues. That that, does that get us to a reasonable place? Close enough, right?
In other words, compare the budget between the two years.
As if we'd not had a.
Yeah. Grant list.
Have the review. Yeah. And not for widespread publication.
This is what we understand.
But as I said, the challenge there is there would have been normal grand list growth. We've had, in and of itself, we've had one and one and a half percent grand list growth over the past, over the, over the past couple of years, right?
Maybe use a five year average on that.
Yeah, we could use it.
Did we ever get that separation of what? You know, to Susan's question, you know, it's a, it's thirty percent average. You'd have to go property by property acres.
Well, so here's, here's one, here's, here's, here's one thing I've asked.
I have it.
Okay.
So she did respond to that question, so hopefully this answers it. Residential went up thirty seven point nine percent. Commercial properties are up eleven point one. Industrial properties forty point nine.
Wow.
And apartments, one hundred percent.
Fascinating.
And that comes out to thirty percent average.
Yeah, I I I asked for the total increase in the new grand list for commercial versus residential.
I mean, that speaks, that speaks to the difficulty of getting a.
Thirty seven point nine.
Rancid probably going up.
Yeah.
Close, because that's how they would rent an apartment building based on cash flow basis of spending.
Now, you also need no personal property in the vehicle. There's no question. But the eleven percent is an interesting number.
Yeah.
What did you say industrial is?
Forty point nine. Let me forward these so you'll have them, forward these to all of you as well.
The eleven percent is the interest. What do you do with the personal property in there?
Yeah.
Personal property is a separate, separate.
Oh, what personal property, what?
She didn't give us.
I asked for commercial versus residential. You specifically asked for real estate.
Now you need, now you need no personal property in motor vehicles as well to get the full picture.
But um, I already asked back, she's been a little bit busy lately, but if she's going to pull this together, I want to see the mean, the median. Um, how many properties fell below that number and how many properties were above that? Um, so.
Well, specifically residential, I mean, that's, it's not that what's what we're concerned about, but it kind of is our, you know, our sphere of conversations are around. As I mentioned earlier.
The other thing I'm saying.
I guess when we were talking about what the numbers are going to be, you know, it's interesting to think about a thirty percent increase, but how does that affect somebody that's had a fifty percent increase? Which substantial number have a fifty percent increase in there? Raise.
Already figured out my taxes based on uh, uh, from twenty two up to uh, twenty eight. But a little spreadsheet, I had a conversation with a realer the other day. Somebody is buying a piece yesterday, actually. It's a property on Neck Road. Uh, and he was looking to find out what the tax impact was. He says, you're not getting that number from me, but I'll tell you what it could be. Ranges, you know. You know, the mill rate could be anywhere from, you know, twenty two to thirty, um, depending on what the budget comes out like, so.
What's that, thirty two now?
Is that thirty three? Thirty three point.
Twelve?
Or twenty three?
See, we're trying to get to is. The difference between projected, present, projected, and a fifty percent increase in your assessment. Because you, if you just look at residential, I don't think the thirty percent is accurate. I mean, obviously, just by what you just told us, if you certainly look at residential, I'm sure the average is double that. Which, which kind of frankly coincides with my, you know, anecdotal conversations are all in that fifty, seventy five percent range.
And again, those are the folks who are getting hit with those increases, that who are feeling that pain and where raising.
Well, it's the res, it's the residential piece.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you listen to what the number she just gave us without commercial in there.
Up at residential, she said one of thirty seven point nine. So it's five points above.
If you take out the commercial out of the, the average of thirty, you take out, you know, the ones below that.
It'd be interesting to see the distribution, how many total numbers of properties, because.
Right.
Quite honestly, that property I was talking. quite honestly, that property I was talking about yesterday went from uh uh assess price of four forty or four twenty four to one point two.
That's why I, yeah, it'd be it'd be interesting in this budget referendum cycle. Because when you look at residential. I don't have to say where I think.
Which is why I'm taking wagers on whether or not the first referendum passes.
I didn't want to juice anything. Very real. I mean, when you look at residence. Be interested.
All right, anything else?
One did. The very first thing we mentioned at the beginning of this meeting was the board. And put those numbers into the bottom line. Sorry. Um, so our we're at three point seven five percent increase when I calculate in the board of ed. I have a total budget of three seven, one point three seven.
Okay.
Hundred, one hundred and fourteen point seven million, four point three seven percent, up four point eight million dollars.
Okay. That's maybe the board for saying twenty seven.
Sixteen.
The sixteen.
I think this is when Matt puts Matt and Paul do the.
And I know. Anyone wants to participate in the presentation or talk about any portions of this budget, we'd like to share this.
Oh, we'd save that too.
Or die too.
We all.
Uh, let me know if you're interested. We can certainly.
Oh, and by the way, I whacked a bathroom.
Okay.
What do you think is the BOF appetite? Do you have any clue?
Uh.
Can we?
I don't know.
Call the ball? I moved it.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.